Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council Meeting for July 7th, 2008 to order. First thing on the agenda, as always, is roll call and determination of quorum. Jackie, if you would, please.
LaCroix, Johnson, Hadcock, Hurobit.
Here.
K.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Wyfenbach.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Boger.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Let's see, is Jan Christensen in the audience? I don't see Jan. At this time, as always, we'll have our invocation. Jan, I don't see Jan here tonight, so if you'd all rise, and we'll have a moment of silence, and we'll follow that immediately with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or pager, if you could please turn that off. The rule is, if your pager or your cellphone goes off, you buy doughnuts in two weeks. With that, we will go to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items to be added to the agenda? Marsha, I know you had a 120A, is that correct? Which is a warp?
That's correct. And then also, we would just note that on the agenda, item 146 is really a stipulation that goes with item 145.
Very good. Additional items to be added to the agenda. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item under other personal items called Canyon Lake Spillway Update.
Update, very good. Let me get you... Let's give it's... Let's give that a 87A, if we could. Additional items to be added, or items to be changed on the agenda. Any additional? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to adopt the agenda with the inclusion of a 120A, which is a warp, and also recognition that 146 actually belongs with item 145. So we'll basically be eliminating item 146, and also the addition of 87A, which is Canyon Lake Spillway Update.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Chair would look for a motion to approve the minutes of the June 16, 2008, special council meeting on Ju... July 2, 2008, and correct the minutes of the May 5, 2008, to reflect the correct project number for PW042908-6, Blaine, Hallie, Holcomb, and East Jackson, and North Maple Sewer Reconstruction Project.
So move.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to awards and recognitions. I don't see Alderman Johnson here. We do have a resolution, and what I'd like to do, I guess, we will contact him and see if he would join us at next council meeting. I think it's very important that we recognize his over 14 years of service. So we'll just make sure through the mayor's office that he is contacted, and certainly, I think we need to give him that recognition. With that, we need to go into recess, so we can swear in our new council member, and also swear in the four council members that were reelected. So the Chair would look for a motion to go into recess.
So move.
We have a motion and a second going to recess. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in recess. It'll take us about just two or three minutes here to get everything lined up, and then we'll get started. Okay, the Chair would look for a motion to come out of recess.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are back out of recess. Now, as always, the first thing, as we said, first of all, let me congratulate the four council members that were reelected, and also, let me welcome Patty Martenson, the new representative from Ward 1. Welcome. At this point, as required, we go into the election of our officers, both the President and the Vice President of the Council. So at this time, the Chair would, and just for procedure, we will actually hold the elections, then we will take a short recess, allow everything to reset, and we'll go in and have the cake. So... And that is also an invitation to the public. We'll be having cake here shortly, probably within five minutes. You're welcome to come in and join us. We have cake, and we have punch. It's actually pretty good. And no, I haven't sampled it yet. And so, with that, the Chair would look for nominations. We will start with the nomination for President of the City Council. If you have a nomination, please turn your light on. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I nominate Deb Hadcock for President.
Very good. We have Deb Hadcock. Additional nominations? Let's go to Bob Hurobit.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Alderman Bill O'Kreppke.
Alderman Bill O'Kreppke. Very good. So far, we have Alderman Deb Hadcock and Alderman Bill O'Kreppke. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none. The Chair would look for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, we go into the election, and as I believe tradition, we will be voting, and there'll be slips that are passed out. If you could... I'm sorry? Okay, we have notepads? Okay. Everyone has notepads. Some of us have notepads.
My other right.
Your other right?
(laughing) I'll share with you.
Okay.
I want you to pass them down. And so, let's go to Ron Wyfenbach, and let me do this, and I'll address procedurally. That's probably the question.
Yep.
What we will do is, you will write one of the two candidates' names, Deb Hadcock or Bill O'Kreppke. Those will be gathered. Please make sure that you write your name on the ballot, so we can record those, because once the vote is tallied, we do need to put those into public record. So if you would just please put the person that you are voting for, either Deb Hadcock or Bill O'Kreppke, and then sign your name, and then we will take them down, and we will have Jason Green and Mr. Preston announce the winner. And then if anybody wishes, from the media wishes, to inspect those, they'll be available at the end of the dais. Okay? Ron, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that. I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be in the public record, that people would know who voted for who, and...
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Preston and Mr. Green can give us a count, and then when you're ready, you can let us know.
Do we vote on that, too?
(inaudible)
Mayor, the vote is seven to three for Deb Hadcock.
Very good. Congratulations, Alderman Hadcock. Very good. Next, we will open the floor up for nominations for Vice President of the City Council.
No, we don't have any more ballots.
Oh, okay, Jackie, you can give us a couple...
There he is.
So the three of us down here don't have anything.
We will give you a vote.
Thank you.
(laughing) Okay, so let's, first of all, let's recognize nominations for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurobit.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Lloyd LaCroix.
Very good. And let's also go... So we do have Lloyd LaCroix nominated for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Ron Kroger.
And we have Ron Kroger. Okay, so far, we have Alderman Lloyd LaCroix and Alderman Ron Kroger. Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close nominations. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We will go through the same exercise here. If you would please write the candidate, either Lloyd LaCroix or Ron Kroger, and along with your name.
(inaudible)
Very good. So far, we have Alderman Deb Hadcock and Alderman Bill O'Kreppke. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none. The Chair would look for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, we go into the election, and as I believe tradition, we will be voting, and there'll be slips that are passed out. If you could... I'm sorry? Okay, we have notepads? Okay. Everyone has notepads. Some of us have notepads.
My other right.
Your other right?
(laughing) I'll share with you.
Okay.
I want you to pass them down. And so, let's go to Ron Wyfenbach, and let me do this, and I'll address procedurally. That's probably the question.
Yep.
What we will do is, you will write one of the two candidates' names, Deb Hadcock or Bill O'Kreppke. Those will be gathered. Please make sure that you write your name on the ballot, so we can record those, because once the vote is tallied, we do need to put those into public record. So if you would just please put the person that you are voting for, either Deb Hadcock or Bill O'Kreppke, and then sign your name, and then we will take them down, and we will have Jason Green and Mr. Preston announce the winner. And then if anybody wishes, from the media wishes, to inspect those, they'll be available at the end of the dais. Okay? Ron, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that. I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be in the public record, that people would know who voted for who, and...
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Preston and Mr. Green can give us a count, and then when you're ready, you can let us know.
Do we vote on that, too?
(inaudible)
Mayor, the vote is seven to three for Deb Hadcock.
Very good. Congratulations, Alderman Hadcock. Very good. Next, we will open the floor up for nominations for Vice President of the City Council.
No, we don't have any more ballots.
Oh, okay, Jackie, you can give us a couple...
There he is.
So the three of us down here don't have anything.
We will give you a vote.
Thank you.
(laughing) Okay, so let's, first of all, let's recognize nominations for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurobit.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Lloyd LaCroix.
Very good. And let's also go... So we do have Lloyd LaCroix nominated for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Ron Kroger.
And we have Ron Kroger. Okay, so far, we have Alderman Lloyd LaCroix and Alderman Ron Kroger. Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close nominations. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We will go through the same exercise here. If you would please write the candidate, either Lloyd LaCroix or Ron Kroger, and along with your name.
(inaudible)
Very good. Next, we will open the floor up for nominations for Vice President of the City Council.
No, we don't have any more ballots.
Oh, okay, Jackie, you can give us a couple...
So the three of us down here don't have anything.
We will give you a vote.
Thank you.
(laughing) Okay, so let's, first of all, let's recognize nominations for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurobit.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Lloyd LaCroix.
Very good. And let's also go... So we do have Lloyd LaCroix nominated for Vice President. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Ron Kroger.
And we have Ron Kroger. Okay, so far, we have Alderman Lloyd LaCroix and Alderman Ron Kroger. Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close nominations. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We will go through the same exercise here. If you would please write the candidate, either Lloyd LaCroix or Ron Kroger, and along with your name.
(inaudible)
Very good. Motion on the floor is to send this back to legal and finance. Seeing further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are out of recess.
Mayor, the vote is six to four for Alderman LaCroix.
Very good. Congratulations, Alderman LaCroix. With that, the Chair would look for a motion to recess for about 10 minutes. We'll go have some cake, and that'll give everybody the opportunity to put our names back up. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in recess. Out of recess?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in recess. Out of recess?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are out of recess. That takes us to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the City Council members present. Are there any items from the public? Any items from the public? If not, we will move on. We are on to number one, which is the MDA Fill the Boot Campaign. Heather, are you here? If you could, Heather, if you could come up and identify yourself for the record.
Sure.
And just a... Yep, and just a reminder, I'll turn your mic on, and during this time period, we typically allow three minutes.
Oh, okay.
And if you just watch the lights here, though, so I'll give you an indication.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, my name is Heather Forten, and I am the District Director for the South Dakota Chapter of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and I just thank you for having me tonight. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and thank the Rapid City Department of Fire and Emergency Services, as well as Rapid City Local 1040, and the City of Rapid City for the Fill the Boot that was held May 27th, 28th, and 29th. And I just wanted to recognize a few individuals. If I could have Jim Bussell, Billy Mitchell, Chief Rolfing, and Mayor Hanks come forward. I just have a little gift for you. Because of everyone's support, we were able to raise $43,500 to support the over 550 families we serve in the greater South Dakota area, so... (applause) So first, to Jim Bussell, who was... We couldn't have done it without him. He was the Fill the Boot Coordinator and kind of spearheaded this whole thing. So, thank you so much, Jim.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then Billy, couldn't have done it without you either.
Thank you.
Chief Rolfing.
Thank you.
And finally, to Mayor Hanks and the entire city of Rapid City. Just, words can't even explain. I can't explain the gratitude for the city. You guys were behind us the whole time, and I just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
it 11,000 or $12,000?
$12,500.
They were hoping to get to 12,500, and they got $42,000. That's an awful lot of credit that is deserved, not only through the MDA, but also to our firemen. With that, let's recognize a couple of councilmen. Let's go to Alderman... Do we have the lights working correctly? Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Nope.
Nope, I'm sorry. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Heather, I'd just like to thank you and all the firefighters that did all the work on Fill the Boot. That was a lot of work, getting out there and having people put money in the boot, and all the firefighters, you guys are awesome. Thank you on behalf of the City Council. You did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I call people, if I call on the wrong people, the reason is that some of our lights up here are actually showing the folks where they were sitting prior to the election, so that's why I called on Malcolm Chapman. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Very good. That was information. Thank you, Heather. We are on... Whoops. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank the Fire Department and the MDA people, and I'd also like to thank the citizens of Rapid City for being so generous, knowing that even though times are tough, they came up, they stepped up the plate, and as Mayor Hanks said, their will was 12,500, and they well exceeded that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, we will be moving on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. This is items 2 through 90, and the Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment on items 2 through 61, please. 2 through 61.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for items 2 through 61. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 2 through 61. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any item 2 through 61? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 2 through 61.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This time, the Chair would ask if any items, if any items need to be removed from the consent calendar. If so, please turn your light on. Let's go to... Oh, they do have the lights working now. Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove item number five.
Number five. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix.
I'd like item 22.
Item 22. Any additional items 2 through 61 we need to have removed? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 48 through 50, please. 48, 49, and 50.
And 50. Very good. 48, 49, 50. Any additional items that need to be removed from the consent calendar from items 2 through 61? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 61, with the exception of 5, 22, 48, 49, and 50.
So move.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Any... Any discussion on that motion? Actually, the motion is for approval, not discussion. Seeing no further discussion. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix. Also, item 38?
Yes, item 38, please.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 61, with the exception of 5, 22, 38, 48, 49, and 50. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to item number five, and Alderman LaCroix, could you read that in? That comes from our Public Works Committee.
Recommend that the City Council form a council development committee to address the funding for infrastructure development to be utilized by the city in guiding future growth and development. This comes forward with recommendations for approval.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need a clarification on this, and just based on how I'm reading this, this is looking for a funding source. So my recommendation, and I'd like to make a substitute motion to send this back, send this to Legal and Finance for further discussion and clarification.
Okay, we have a substitute motion, which would send this back to Legal and Finance for further, basically, clarification on the intent of the motion. Discussion on the substitute motion only, please. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I'm in support of the motion on the floor, and I won't go any further than that, but if there's further discussion about this, I would have a couple additional comments to make.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is to send this back to Legal and Finance. Seeing further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 22. Mr. LaCroix, could you read that in, please?
I approve the stipulations. A request by DDI International to consider an application for a vacation of utility easements, and this is located at being 154 Viking Drive. This comes forward with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? I think Alderman LaCroix is going to abstain, so that's why he's not going to make the motion.
For approval with stipulations?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Discussion on that motion?
And I'll be abstaining from this.
Very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of stipulations. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes with Alderman Lloyd LaCroix abstaining. We are on to item number 38 on the Legal and Finance Consent Calendar, and Alderman Hadcock, could you please read that in?
Number 38 is to authorize the Mayor and Finance Office to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Copperfield Land Company LLC and Copperfield Vistas LLP regarding payment of the sewer construction fees for expansion of sewer service in the Elkvale area. And it's a revised agreement from City Attorney's Office.
Move approval. With the revised agreement with the City Attorney's Office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, as revised, as provided by the City Attorney's Office. Jason, is that correct?
It is, and there's a hard copy on the dais.
Yep, very good. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, noting that this was not linked to the agenda, if we could just have a summary of what this, what this means and what the implications are, and how this differs from what was previously authorized.
Very good. Marsha, did you want to do that, or do you want Jason?
I can provide a summary of what this agreement does.
Okay.
It ensures that the city will be able to receive payments for the connection fees that are associated with these subdivisions, the various spaces of Copperfield Vistas. As you know, the Point 16 Committee has recommended, and the council has approved, the expenditure of funds for improvements to a sewer along Elkvale Road. Because the project, the subdivision, is moving forward, by entering into this agreement, we're insured that we do get repayment from these various lots of that connection fee that will be adopted once all the costs are incurred. My understanding is that Mike Shad has reviewed the revisions that were requested by the attorney for the other party, and he can probably address those changes.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, just over.
I'm Shad, Assistant City Attorney. The major substantive change was an oversight on my part to include, let's see, it's adding paragraph 10, which is setting a deadline of October 1, 2008, for the city to provide sanitary sewer service to the development for Phase 1A of Copperfield Vistas subdivision. That was discussed in the meeting with growth management and public works, and in the first draft, I did not put that deadline in. Mr. Scott Sumner for the developers pointed that out. So that's the real only substantive change, other than some verbiage that was changed, just to more accurately depict the agreement that we worked out.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it fair to ask, I realize this is sewer, but is it fair to ask what the product, where we're at with the completion of the secondary access, which was part of the reason for the agreements and city working?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins on that, or probably... Marsha, you want to?
Thank you. Again, the issue was the provision of secondary access, that is, under construction for a connection that goes through the industrial park, and I believe that has been addressed through the Tax Income and Financing District, which was created for this. So that is provided for as part of the planned development and the subdivision plats.
Okay, Alderman Quaker.
Want to follow up, Mayor? So the, so the secondary access is then scheduled also to be completed by one October.
Marsha?
That will be part of the subdivision plat, and as such, that improvement will need to be in place in accordance with all these subdivision improvements. My understanding is that they're in the process of paving all of the roads in the next 60 days, so it will be well in, before that.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Quaker. Okay, the motion on the floor is approval with stipulations. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to item number 48, and let's see, that is still under Legal and Finance, so Alderman Hadcock, if you could please read that in.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 48 is authorize Mayor and Finance Office to sign maintenance agreement renewal with Johnson Controls, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question regarding this item. This is for a maintenance agreement contract for the Milo Barber Transportation Center, and I was wondering if the controls at the Milo Barber Center are also proprietary? at the Milo Barber Center are also proprietary like the energy plant controls are. And the next part of my question would be is, and if that is the case, is that being reviewed so that these maintenance agreements can be more competitive in the future?
Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
To answer the first question, yes, it is proprietary. There are Johnson Controls in that building. The second part of that question, to, I guess, remove, perhaps, that obstacle would require removing or replacing the equipment that's in there, and that'd be a substantial investment. So I'm not sure that that would be a feasible option. It's very common that once you do select a brand of technology in heating and air conditioning system, that you're pretty much locked in with that brand until you replace it. So we do know that we are going to be doing major renovations to the Milo Barber here in the next year, two years. That will be something that we evaluate when we do that project.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, anything else, sir? Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions were the same as Sam, but I, we did discuss this at legal and finance, and so I was satisfied that the proprietary issues took precedence over any other choices that we had at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 49, please.
Forty-nine is to authorize mayor and finance office to sign covenant agreement for the variance to waive orthopedic building partnership, LLP's requirement to provide sewer service, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
If I could have a brief explanation of this, please.
Let's see. Marsha, can you give us an explanation on that?
Item 49 is the agreement relative to the sewer service on an adjacent lot. Typically, that sewer service would be extended to the property boundary. The same general individuals, even though they have different corporations, own both parcels. It was felt it would be best to delay installation of that sewer until it was determined where the buildings would be so they could be most efficiently installed. This guarantees, similar to a waiver of right to protest, that that sewer would be extended to the property boundary.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, anything else?
So this does protect the city's interest in terms of growth down the road?
Correct. This will ensure that the adjacent property owner will have access to the sewer, and that the owner of this parcel will be responsible for extending it to their property boundary at that time.
Thank you.
Alderman Quaker, anything else, sir? Okay, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 50, please.
Number 50 is appointment of Ron Kroger, Sam Quaker, and Jim Preston as freeholders to establish value of platted portion of land on the Walling Bowing site, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. It was my understanding that for this property, there was going to be a formal appraisal rather than a freeholder's assessment. I was, I guess I'm surprised that we would go the freeholder route.
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been discussion about appointing a board of freeholders to evaluate the appraisal and perhaps establish a different value, a higher value than what the appraisal provided for. That's the purpose of the board of freeholders here.
To answer your question, I believe an appraisal was done on this property?
Yes.
And the board, this board will actually be reviewing that appraisal?
And there will be full support of city attorney's office and growth management at that meeting? Okay, thank you.
You will have support staff there. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. I was waiting for Sam to say I want off, but... Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the end of the consent calendar. We are now on to the non-consent calendar, items 62 through 90. And the chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period for items 62 through 90, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do have two speaker request forms on item number 79 and also on item 89. So Deb, if you'd want to come forward and talk about item number 79, please. And there again, Deb, if you could identify yourself, we know you are, but if you could identify yourself for the record, and as always, this is the point where we typically allow three minutes, but if you could just watch the lights. Yep?
Thank you. Deborah Weiner, financial advisor with Edward Jones here in Rapid City. And I'm actually here primarily today to beg your indulgence and request a continuance for, to the next city council meeting for this. I have outside counsel coming in to discuss this, and they could not get here because it's the holiday weekend. And I'm here to answer any other questions that anyone might have.
Okay. What we'll do is when it comes up on the agenda, then we'll look to see if that motion is made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We also have a speak request on item number 89. It's Quinton Porter. And if, there again, if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Quinlin Porter. All right. I'm here today. I would first like to thank the city council and the mayor for the opportunity to appeal this denial. I was requesting my security license, and I was denied for, it says, a violent criminal history. In the past, I did have an incident about, say, 2002. I was in college at West Illinois, and I was playing on a football team. This was a fraternity football sort of fight that did break out that I should have walked away from, but unfortunately, I was involved and did get arrested for that incident. Something that I do know today, I would have not gotten involved in at that, in that situation. That was the only assault case that I was involved in. There was one incident here recently, a disorderly conduct, when I was at the bar downtown, and it was a situation where my brother, I have a younger brother here in town, he was being squared up by these two gentlemen, and I was coming over to kind of aid my brother some, and they took a swing at me. And I was involved in this situation just a bit. But what I was charged with was for stomping this guy, when I did not, absolutely did not, never stomped the guy any, any way, shape, or form. And I did want to fight this charge, because it was something where I didn't feel like I was guilty of assaulting this guy and stomping this guy. But it was a situation where it came down to, I can either plead for disorderly conduct, or if I go to trial and unfortunately do get found guilty, I would actually have to go to jail. And jail is really not an option for me, being a father and a husband. So I just took the plea and kind of just had to go with that, because I could not afford an attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Chief, I think I just called you chief, didn't I?
I am, actually, for this week. Chief's out of town. Captain Doug Thrash, representing Chief Allender, who's on vacation. As you know, the city code requires, 5-52-050, requires the chief to approve or deny a security license. And the letter he sent to Mr. Porter documented, well, I actually said he would document the criminal history here, and I have the list if you'd like me to read this to you. The application asks for arrests or, and/or, or convictions. So arrests are part of this process, even though he's been found not guilty or dismissed. So the violent criminal history is an impact on someone that would be working in a liquor establishment as a bouncer or security. So we felt like that was, his history is too violent to be in that position. And I'd be happy to go through the criminal history if you'd like.
Thank you. Okay, I see. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we discussing this item now, or I don't understand why we?
When we bring it up on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity, if you want to ask a question. This is strictly the public comment period. Okay, any further issues from the public? And if you could, go ahead. Please identify yourself for the record, and if you could identify the item that you wish to speak about.
Sure, I put a slip in for item number 90.
Oh, I'm sorry, they didn't. Tony Olson, they must have slipped it in on me. I've...
That's fine. I'm Terry Olson.
Oh, Terry Olson.
I'm sorry.
Getting old.
I'm with Lamar Advertising. Mayor Hank and council, thank you for your time tonight. Like I said, my name is Terry Olson. I'm with Lamar Advertising. I'm appealing the decision of the signed code Board of Appeals. We have a billboard located at 1030 West Main, and I'm not sure if this is working. And I'm not sure how to work it.
Marsha, I'll give you a hand here.
Okay. This billboard is currently 40 feet high. What we are proposing to do is to rebuild it and rebuild it 38 feet. Now, under the, under the current ordinance, we cannot... Under the current ordinance, we can't build any higher than 30. The signed, task force put an addendum that if we could build that 30 feet or less, we could have rebuilt it. What I tried to do was try to rebuild it right here. If my hand would stay put, we'd have to have it made. I tried to rebuild it right here, 30 feet. And if I could have rebuilt it 30 feet at that point, all I would have had to do was go to Brad, get a permit over the counter. Now, unfortunately, there's only 17 feet from this point over to this point. And unfortunately, the billboard would not fit in there. I tried to go over on the east side of the building, and there was not enough room there either. So what I'm proposing to do is rebuild this at 40, at 38 feet. I'm going to reduce the size down by 12%. And by the way, just two years ago, I've already reduced that down by 20% to meet the current ordinance. One of the stipulations in granting your variance is a topical graphical condition. And if that building wasn't there, we'd have that billboard built at 30 feet. But unfortunately, the building was there before the billboard was there. The digital, I'm putting a digital on, I want to put a digital on there, and our structural engineer said that pole would not accommodate the extra weight. Now, if you've seen that pole, you could see that's been welded together four different times in four different places. In fact, Warren Fiss is a landowner, and I do have his approval. And he just said that before we bought it, that billboard did blow down on his building, and it was put back up. And I could see where it was done that way. One of the complaints against us in the signed code Board of Appeals was for the digital. Now, our digitals don't blink, flash, or scroll. We have no movement on them. And I don't know if you've paid attention to the wanted poster that we had on the digital last week. Nationwide, they did a national most wanted for a murder down in Kansas City. And it was put on in the morning, and that afternoon, the man was caught. Also, we had the capacity to go on the amber alert. In 30 seconds, we could, we could have a little picture of a child up on there. Also, it's our intention to go in green. If we have a digital there, we will have no labor in putting up a billboard. Our guys don't have to go out there and stall the labor. There's no gas in there. And the only injury that would happen on that billboard is if my programmer would fall off his chair. So what we're asking for is just a little latitude to clean this structure up. I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Any additional speakers? We do not have any additional speaker request forms, and we are dealing with... Items 62 through 90. 62 through 90. Any additional speaker requests? If not, the chair would look to closing the public comment period on items 62 through 90, please. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item 62, please.
62 is the first reading of ordinance number 5404 to create a sidewalk cafe permit by amending subsection 12.20.020E of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 63, please.
63 is the first reading of ordinance number 5405 and ordinance amending section 1706 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to general agricultural district located south of East South Dakota Highway 44 between the western terminus of Green Valley Drive and east of Jolly Lane, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 64, please.
64 is the first reading of ordinance number 5406 and ordinance amending section 1706 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by city of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district located at 300 East Mall Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 65, please.
65 is the first reading of ordinance number 5407 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Fiss Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Paul Bradsky at Atlantis LLC for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district located south of 4301 South Interstate 90 Service Road. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 66, please.
66 is the first reading of ordinance number 5408 and ordinance amending section 70.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential two district located south of Port Rush Road and west of Dunsmore Road, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 67, please.
67 is the second reading of ordinance number 5369 authorizing the police department to collect fees for their performance of criminal background investigations of city employment applicants and city licensed applicants by adding section 2.20.030 to the Rapid City Municipal Code with recommended changes, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. While I certainly support the city's need to recoup the cost of criminal background investigations, I am concerned about the effect of essentially doubling a number of the fees for many of our license holders, including security licenses, taxi licenses, and a number of other licenses that the city issues. And I think that if we're, if we as a council are going to enact policy to double the, double the fee, we should really also look at a companion amendment to change the length of the license itself from, from one year to two or three years. Yeah, I think that that's a reasonable thing to do. And clearly, if there is criminal activity that occurs in the intervening time, it would most likely be, be discovered. And if we increase the amount of time between license renewals, it would also reduce administrative burden for, for the city. And I would like to, us to explore that before we, before we approve this ordinance tonight. I'd like to see what the rest of the council thinks about this. But I, I'm not opposed to doing this, but I think that if we're going to do it, we're going to get pushback, and a lot of concern will be raised from license holders. And one of the ways to easily explain this to them is say, you know, we've doubled the cost, and we had to do this because of background screens, but at the same time, we've increased the length of time for you to hold the fee. So I guess I'd like to see what the police chief's thoughts on that are before I, I'm sorry, he's not here, before, before I float that motion and see what the thoughts of the rest of the council are. But I think that that's the way we should proceed with this.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, second reading. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
In terms of what Sam was concerned about, it would, I'd certainly appreciate hearing from the, from Officer Thrash concerning this particular item. And my question would be, if criminal activity takes place in another state, would we hear locally and be aware of that? And would there be any other circumstances where the annual check... And would there be any other circumstances where the annual check would be of value in assuring that security license holders at this point in time are adhering to the law
Mr. Thrash.
and are worthy of that position?
The main security check would come through South Dakota DCI, and they would capture that information. And I don't know if there'd be any problem with delaying... I mean, putting more than one year on there. It's a labor cost that we incur to do this annually, so...
Okay, thank you. Alderman Olson, you still have the floor?
So your response to me is that we would be aware of activity that took place outside of the state of South Dakota?
Yes.
Because I think that was an issue with a previous application of some activity that took place in other states. And I just wondered if in ensuing years, that would be come to our attention or would not come to our attention?
Was that a question there, Karen? Okay, Mr. Thrash?
When we wouldn't... Only by going through the review process of looking at the criminal history would we know what's currently happened. If something were to happen next week in another area, we wouldn't know that.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bob Herobut. We're getting a number of lights here. And just a reminder, the motions for approval, if the council so wishes to continue this, then we should probably dispose of the issue by continuing it. But let's go ahead and make the rounds here real quick and take some public comment. Let's go to, or I'm sorry, council comment. Let's go to Alderman Bob Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea, and what I'm hearing is that the police don't mind the idea either. To me, we can... We're still recouping our costs while also achieving a savings of labor time within the police department where those resources could be otherwise dedicated. And so I generally like the idea. And I don't know if those of us up here are inclined to want to continue this. But I would like to support the motion for approval on the floor. Or if in doubt, let's continue and get a full report from the police department of the impact of this. But I think we can both recoup our costs and achieve greater efficiencies within the department by doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out to the council that I think it's very unlikely that if there's criminal activity that takes place apart from the area where an individual is licensed, it's not very likely that's going to be picked up by the police department during the arrest process. So the criminal background check on an annual basis will serve an important function in that regard. The other thing I think it's important to point out is that when you talk about licensing schemes, the reason that the city has a licensing scheme is to protect the public at large. It's not for the convenience of the applicant.
Thank you. Let's see. Let's go to, does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If not, we will go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's been good discussion raised on this. And I think that the discussion tells us that we need to have more discussion. And I'd like to offer a motion to continue this to the next Legal and Finance Committee and ask the city attorney's office and police department to bring forward amendments to the ordinance to increase the terms of the licenses or bring recommendations. I'd like to leave that open.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to actually send this back to Legal and Finance and ask the city attorney's office to bring back amendments to lengthen the terms to approximately two years. Is that sort of the gist? Okay, discussion on that motion, please. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Based on what Jason just said, I would hope that the council would not continue this. I think the fees, Mr. Thrash, are they fifteen and then twenty dollars? So it's a total of thirty-five dollars for an annual fee. And I think that's a pretty small price to pay for safety of the citizens of Rapid City. And I think the annual basis, to me, is, like Jason said, a safety factor for the citizens of Rapid City. So I would hope the city council would not continue this and keep it at an annual basis based on our city attorney.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to continue, actually to send this back to Legal and Finance. That is the motion on the floor. That's the motion we'll be voting on. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Hatcock?
No.
Herobut?
Aye.
Okrepke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Wifinbach?
No.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Well, Martenson.
Martenson.
Old habit, sorry about that, Patty. Motion carries on a seven to three vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. That item was continued. Actually, sent back to Legal and Finance. That takes us to item number sixty-eight, please.
Sixty-eight is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three seventy-eight requiring drivers of vehicles to move over or slow down upon approaching vehicles using amber or yellow warning lights on any street by adding chapter ten point one, two point four zero zero. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to raise a concern that I had raised previously. I am not opposed to this ordinance and would note that there is identical law on the books for the state. But I am also... I am concerned about the impact on revenue to our schools by the city writing its own ordinance and enforcing its own ordinance, even though the city is allowed to enforce state law. The same exact issue came up four or five years ago relating to truck scales and overweight vehicles. And it created an issue at that time because, really, this isn't an issue so much of public safety as it is an issue of where the fine money will go. Because we already have the ability, in my understanding, to write tickets under the state law. So I am concerned about the implications. I will support the ordinance. But as soon as we hear from many legislators or school board members on this issue, I'd like to remind everyone that we did have this discussion on the potential ramifications of doing this.
Thank you. Further discussion. Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Bill Okrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Having been in government for a long time, we have a tendency to make rules upon rules upon rules. Can you explain to me why we need to have this second? I mean, if we have already a law on the books and the state says it's okay, why do we need to have another?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the reason this came forward was that there was a concern raised as to whether or not the state statute would be enforceable on local city streets. I believe it is enforceable on local city streets. However, there is a possibility that a defense attorney could challenge a ticket issued for failing to move over under the state statute, for example, on a residential street. The city's ordinance would make it crystal clear that we have the ability to enforce that law wherever an emergency vehicle would be stopped within the city limits. And in that regard, the city has exercised the right to regulate the streets in a number of areas that overlap with the state. So it's not that it's unusual.
Mr. Okrepke, you still have the floor, sir. Thank you. Let's next go to Alderman Ron Wifinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question alluding to Sam's question because I'm totally befuddled now. I'm not sure what changes in the ordinance has to do with funding the schools. But if someone can explain that to me.
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the state constitution, fines for violating state statutes are ultimately remitted to the school districts. However, fines for violating city ordinances are partially refunded to the city. I believe that sixty-five percent of the fine portion of a citation would come to the city. The remaining thirty-five percent would go into the state general fund. So that money is also available for funding schools, although it's spread throughout the state. I believe that's where the comments regarding the funding issue come up. I would point out, though, that with the truck issue that was raised earlier, that really related to the civil penalty where the dollar amounts were much more significant than the five hundred dollars per offense that we could charge as the city.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Wifinbach, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate... The other question I had is legal and finance, the same came up on a second reading. And the question was asked, define vehicles with yellow flashing lights. And I think that that needs to be clearly spelled out. And the other, we talk about the education processes taking place. And we put these new laws in effect, and we have a hundred dollar fine for failure to move over. I'm not against this by any means. I understand the safety of our police officers is of the utmost importance. But I'm also understanding that, you know, understanding that law after law after law, we mean, pretty soon... And I know ignorance of the law is no excuse. But at some point, I mean, if... I want to know what the timeframe of this educational period is going to take place. I understand it's going to happen again. But at the same time, I don't want the citizens pulled over time after time. I mean, they get pulled over for everything they do now. So I just, I want to address that concern in some timeframe or whatever and what constitutes yellow flashing lights.
Did you want to ask that of...
I would ask that question to the city attorney.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can speak to part of that, and part of it I'll have to defer to Captain Thrash. But what constitutes the yellow beacon for purpose of this ordinance is not the flashers that every vehicle on the road has. It's rather something that would be mounted on the roof or above the standard equipment lights for the purpose of calling additional attention to the vehicle. There was a question at Legal and Finance about who can have that light and who cannot. And there is not a clear statute that says these vehicles may and these may not. Certain vehicles are required to have the yellow flashing light, for example, tow trucks. But other vehicles that do work in the right of way regularly have them. For example, construction vehicles, and many of our city-operated vehicles also have those lights. So I can't tell you exactly which vehicles are entitled to it and which are not. The bottom line is that most vehicles that have it have it for a legitimate reason. And I would suspect that you would see police officers using discretion if they came across a vehicle using a yellow flashing beacon for no apparent reason.
Alderman Wifinbach, you still have the floor?
I think I'd like to see that further defined. We're asking the citizens of Rapid City to, you know, be held accountable for a law that we can't even explain. We can't describe what yellow flashing lights are. I understand in a police car, it's pretty obvious. An ambulance, pretty obvious. Sometimes a city vehicle's maybe not so obvious. Sometimes a utility vehicle, not so obvious. If we could explain that or have that spelled out somewhat, if the state statute spells it out, fine. I'm comfortable with that. But I would just like to see something that spells it out. So there is a definite... This is... So I'm not... I don't know. The chief's not here tonight, and I hate to put you on the spot.
Go ahead.
I'll put you on the spot. Are we going to define... Are we going to define what yellow flashing lights are on a particular vehicle? I mean, I don't... I'm not comfortable with a gray area. I mean, that's...
My opinion would be that in the real world, where there was an emergency vehicle of some type that needed to put on the yellow lights, at that point, common sense would prevail as far as law enforcement goes. In my judgment, if there was a need to do that, it would be done appropriately, and it wouldn't be abused. We're not here to make life miserable for the citizens. We're here to make it safe. We're not here to write tickets for people that abuse these. And I don't... I just don't see that happening. Safety seems to be the driving force from our perspective.
Okay. Alderman Wifinbach, you still have the floor, sir.
I understand that. And I wouldn't even make the allegation that there is not a common sense factor. But I understand that it doesn't always happen in a realistic world. And I just would like to see something that would describe yellow flashing lights. If I decided to put yellow flashing lights on my car, I mean, that... I mean, maybe that's far-fetched. Maybe it's not. I just... I'd like to see some sort of... Something that I don't think I'm asking for that much. I mean, I can't believe that state statute exists that doesn't have it spelled out. I mean, I could see a huge gray area. But I just, you know, I have no concerns about this, you know, being a... That would be the only one I would have, so... That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Bob Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor. I think further accurate, I can live with this one way or the other. But I think we need to look at it realistically here. And this really smacks essentially of a revenue grab. We have a state statute on the books that can be enforced by our city attorney's opinion. The odds of somebody challenging a ticket of this size all the way to the Supreme Court to find out that we didn't have authority to write that ticket is incredibly unlikely. And okay, so we lost the revenue from that one ticket. It would cost thousands in attorney's fees for somebody to get to that point. So I think we need to look at it. And normally, as a city leader, I'm all for more revenue for the city. However, I think with the current fiscal situation faced by our school districts, we need to be sensitive to whether we are simply reallocating revenue for the enforcement of a safety law that we are already able to enforce as it is. So can I live with it? Sure. Do I think we really need to do this? I think realistically, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Well, it seems like common sense on this would be pretty common sense. Police Department, I don't feel is in for a revenue grab. I don't think that's a reality check. I think they're in there for health and safety of the citizens. And this is what I saw this rule as, and we're turning this into something like a fee thing because we're going to get more money. I don't believe the police department sets themselves up for what kind of fee they can get. When I've been out looking, and I have been lately, people do not pull over for the emergency vehicles. They have been giving warning lights. Chief did talk about giving and doing education on people that weren't pulling over. They weren't just going to all of a sudden, sudden, start doing a revenue grab, as we call it. But the basic thing here is the health and safety of the citizens. That's why we're doing it. I don't think anybody did it because they wanted to do a revenue grab. But it seems like common sense. This is for the safety and health of the citizens of Rapid City. So they pull over, they get the idea that when an emergency vehicle is coming down the street, you need to move over. And if you watch again, a lot of people don't, and that's why they're doing it. So I believe in my heart that's why they're doing it.
Let's go to Alderman Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've used the words emergency, but in our ordinance, it says stopped vehicle. And I do think that this is about safety. But it seems to me that probably the biggest safety is for the individuals in the stopped vehicle. This... So if you're at a... I'm assuming that if you came upon a construction site where there is a construction crew working, and they have an amber light, we're all very aware that people often go through construction sites at excessive speeds, and there's been quite a bit of marketing that indicates that. So we're not talking about, unless I'm misunderstanding, it doesn't appear we're talking about emergency vehicles. It's talking about stopped vehicles. And I realize there's a whole variety of vehicles that could be of use here. But the chief thing seems to me is, in addition to the people who are driving too fast or driving around this vehicle too fast, it's chiefly, though, I think, to protect the vehicle that's stopped so that they're not hit by a traveling vehicle. So I guess I'm in support of the ordinance. And I did raise some of the questions that Mr. Wifinbach has raised. But I feel satisfied that there won't be... The common sense will be used. And I see this as a protection for someone who is operating with an amber light on their car and they're stopped... or on their vehicle, and they are stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Just procedurally, does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Wifinbach speaks for a second time? If not, we will go to Alderman Ron Wifinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not trying to be obstinate on this. I was told on Wednesday that I would have an answer to the question that was posed Wednesday at Legal Finance on what constitutes yellow flashing lights. Here we are on Monday, and I don't have an answer. And that's the only reason I'm being obstinate. I understand that there's a safety issue. I have no qualms with that. I understand we have a law in place that can be enforced. And I asked a simple question on Wednesday at Legal Finance. I was looking for the minutes of the Legal and Finance Committee. But I... Here we are on Monday, and there's... I don't have an answer. That's my only reasoning for asking the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I call the question.
Okay, the question has been called. Is there objection to calling the question? If not, we go immediately to the vote. The motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We better have a roll call, please.
Herobut?
No.
Okrepke?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Wifinbach? Olson? Kroger? Quaker? McCroy?
Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number sixty-nine, please.
Sixty-nine is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three ninety-two, raising the special charge of disposing of tires at the city landfill by amending section eight point zero eight point two four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy, please.
Number seventy is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three ninety-eight, prohibiting the use of electronic communication mediums during public meetings by adding a new section to chapter two point zero four of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. I support what this ordinance purports to do, but I have asked City Attorney Jason Green for his opinion as to the full scope of the prohibition of the ordinance, and I agree with everything the ordinance does with one exception, and that is the ability to actually look at emails that have already come into us from constituents in our outlook. In other words, not communicating during the meeting, not sending anything, but the ability, and how many times, we probably get ten to one emails over memos or letters, and the ability to access those, the ability to see the constituents' concern and the city staff's person's response. For example, there's one that came in last day or two from Marcia responding to a concern and a series of communications that are all informational that we all have before the meeting, and I think we should be able to access all available information other than communicating from the dais. And I don't know procedurally if I can offer that as an amendment, or if I can ask that this be continued with the direction for the city attorney to carve out just that one little thing, that we can view existing information but not communicate using electronic mediums. I fully support that part of it, and I, I implore my colleagues to look, this isn't anything other than an attempt to allow us to have available existing information at our disposal when considering issues raised before the council.
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hurlbut did pose the question to me, and it's my opinion that you would run afoul of this ordinance by having Microsoft Outlook open during a public meeting. The ordinance prohibits the use of any technology which allows for that communication to occur. And I, in, in drafting this ordinance, we went through a number of variations on this theme, and what we came up with is the only way to effectively implement this and to ensure that we are, are getting everything that is possible for individuals to use during a public meeting is to simply prohibit the use of the technology. We could certainly attempt to come up with an amendment like Alderman Hurlbut suggested. I don't think it's going to be very easy to do, though.
Okay. Alderman Hurlbut, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and I, I guess again, please, those of you up here, consider that the information that we get from our constituents, as well as staff's response to our constituents' requests, is valuable information to be able to access. It's largely the reason we have these laptops. I'm assuming we can still look at the council agenda on our laptops, but that would basically limit our laptops to essentially looking at the agenda. And I don't think that's the intent of those in bringing this forward. I think we want to clarify to the public that there will be no electronic communications among council people, and I think we can do that without eliminating the available information of, of emails from constituents that were received prior, as well as from staff responding to those concerns, and I think it's important that we pass an ordinance that allows us that. Please consider that, and if we need to continue to get a, to get a, a new draft brought forward, or if I can amend that, I'd, I'd prefer to do something that allows for that one little bit to be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I surely understand Alderman Hurlbut's concern about having access to all the information that, that is presented by the public as well as staff during council meetings. And I'm fine with continuing and looking for some resolution to that, but I, I think there's a simple solution. If email does come in prior to, for example, if an email message came in over the weekend from Marcia, I mean, that email could easily be saved as a draft and, in a folder, so that you, you're looking at email that would be emailed as pertinent to today's council meeting in a folder where there's no chance of two-way communication with someone, so you don't have to have Outlook open. I, I think that our, I think most of the folks up here are savvy enough from a technology standpoint to save that email message somewhere where you can have access to it. I don't think our city attorney, in the spirit of what he's written, is saying that we can't have access to information, but to, to put ourselves in a position where that information can be exchanged during the meeting, I, I agree with the spirit of it. My recommendation is that if an email message comes in, save it in some sort of draft form, put it in a folder, and you can obviously go to that folder and open that folder. That would, those would be, that would be my comment.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd McCray.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I, I share Bob's concerns, and for the simple fact, I mean, we got the prime example here today, is that we got a gentleman here appealing his license, and we have an email that it, really, I can't get in and look at from the police chief, and there's nothing linked to the agenda. So, I got nothing, I can't go in there to, to reference on it, and so I'm stuck, you know, besides bringing it all out in the public. My personal opinion on, on this is, you know, we all work long hours, and at times we get to the, the meeting five minutes before the meeting, and we need to look through our emails and go through and check our agenda and do that type of things, whereas we try to do that now, we're, we're going to feel like we're doing something wrong. From the get-go on this, you know, I, I feel we can police ourselves. You know, I see no reason why not at the beginning of the meeting, we say, turn off all cell phones, no IMing. Simple as that. I mean, we're sitting right next to each other, we know how to police each other, we, it's all been brought out in the open, we know what our constituents want. I don't think we need to draft an ordinance because I see a Pandora's Box opening up to this to say, well, now we got someone out in the hallway talking to someone, we need to draft an ordinance for that, we need to stop doing that. We got two council members, you know, it, it can go on and on and on. I mean, that's my opinion, is that I think it should be just a simple statement, no cell phones, no IMing during the meetings, at the beginning of the meeting. And that, that'll be my motion, substitute motion.
Okay. We're going to ask for clarification. The motion on the floor is for the adoption of an ordinance. I'm not exactly sure what your motion is, Alderman McCray, help me out here.
Substitute motion would be, instead of passing an ordinance, would be just to, at the beginning of all our meetings, Public Works, Legal Finance, and so forth, that we do like we do with the cell phones, we, we say, please shut off your cell phones, don't use text, messaging, and no IMing during the council meetings.
Okay, I'm going to go to Jason Green, our city attorney, on this, because this is, I'm looking for the mainness of this motion, and I'm not seeing it in here. Jason, help me out here.
I, I think the intent of the motion is to reject the ordinance and to instead adopt a policy. So, i- if that's the intent of the Alderman, I think the way to go about that is to
Vote this down.
defeat this, defeat this item, and then bring back a policy to the next Legal and Finance Committee meeting.
Have a policy instead of a...
Okay. So, the, the chair is going to rule that it's not germane to the motion on the floor, but I, we certainly understand your intent, Alderman McCray, so if, if that's your desire, our, my suggestion would be to, to vote this down and then bring back a policy. With that, let's go to, let's see, I'm going to go to Alderman Deb Hadcock, who has not had the opportunity to speak, and then we'll go back to Alderman Chapman.
I appreciate what Rob brought forward on the, in, on the emails, because that was a good point Lloyd had said, but on the IMing, I disagree. And electronic use of computers, when we were at the National League of Cities, they just have a policy where you can't use your cell phones, you can't call other council members, you can't, they had some extreme measures, and I thought this was a very good policy for people at this point that couldn't. If they could have, I have to disagree with my council member, then this wouldn't have ever came up in the first place. I think it's a good ordinance, I think it works well. It's not against a certain person, it's, it's a part of us that needs to be put forth, I think, just to make sure it's not done again. If we don't put it as policy or ordinance, I think we'll have resolutions keep changing and changing and changing. It will be harder at this point to change an ordinance. It makes it so at this point, everything is clear to people, and that the public at this point at public meetings know that there won't be any IMing, and they will be paid attention to during public meetings.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing, let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut for a second time.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm not sure where my colleagues are, and whether it be by policy or by ordinance, I just, again, I, I like the, whether it's policy or ordinance, the gist of it, other than not being able to look at past emails, and I would urge my colleagues to either vote this down or continue it for amendment based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Yes.
On the original motion, which is approval of the ordinance.
Ocrepki?
Uh, no.
Chapman?
Aye.
Weifenbach?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
McCray?
No.
Martenson?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Hurlbut?
No.
Motion passes on a seven to three vote. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are on to item number seventy-one, please.
Seventy-one is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three ninety-nine, updating the alcohol sale regulation by amending chapter five point one-two of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go Alderman Ron Kroger.
Actually, I was going to speak to the other item, but that's okay.
Okay, very good. Sorry about that. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-two, please.
Number seventy-two is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-four zero zero to create an on-sale, full-service restaurant alcohol license by amending section five point one-two point zero four zero and subsection five point one-two point zero three zero eight-two and five point one-two zero six zero eight-two of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to express my support for the ordinance, but at the same time, express my desire to see us work with the Municipal League and the legislature to take a look at the, how the strike, the strike price, so to speak, or the initial price is determined, because my understanding, based on the previous discussion, is, is that it's the market that determines what the license will be. If the market drops, then we are, we are stuck with overpriced, a situation where licenses are overpriced, and clearly, this ordinance isn't the place to fix it, it has to be done at the legislative level. But I, I would like to see how that, that discussion can be kept alive, because that is going to be an issue that either in this economy or in future, future years is going to become a concern. So, I would like to see how, how we can address this issue with the Municipal League and the legislature so that we can fix this going forward. Is there any suggestion on that, or how?
Well, my suggestion is, is you can certainly, my suggestion is drop an email to Avon Taylor from Municipal League, and also Mr. Preston and I both sit basically on the Board of Trustees, and, and we both sit, I believe, on the Policy Committee, so if you would email both Mr. Preston and myself, and also email the Municipal League, I believe, within the next two, is it two weeks, Jim, we're headed to, at least I'm headed to peer?
It's August twentieth.
August twentieth. Okay.
Could I offer something after this that, I guess I'd like to have something official that comes from the council rather than just from me? Is there, could, could I put this on, and how could I add this to an agenda?
Yep. What he's saying is if you just put this on the next Legal and Finance?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else, Alderman Quaker? Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to Growth Management, Legal and, Legal and Finance items. Item number seventy-three, please.
Seventy-three is the authorize a mayor and finance office to sign amendment to the contract for private development tax increment number fifty-six between MAP Rushmore LLC and Midland Rushmore LLC and Bankwest of Rapid City and the City of Rapid City, and this came from Legal and Fin, Finance without recommendation.
Okay. Chair, look for motion for discussion, please.
Overrule.
Okay, we have a motion, second for approval for discussion. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Could I have an explanation of this?
Certainly.
Please, if I, I would just like to mention that I, I did try to read this in Legal and Finance minutes, but they weren't posted this weekend, so I didn't want anybody to think I hadn't done my homework, but I did try to do that, so I'd just like to get an update on this.
Very good. Let's go to Marcia Elkins.
The purpose of this agreement is to implement the changes that were made to the project plan in August of two thousand and seven. The agreement's floated around since January, and the applicant now is asking for us to go ahead and, and sign that to implement those changes that had previously been adopted. The concern that was expressed at the committee level was that the project plan was not linked. That is linked online for you, so you can go through and, and review those amendments and revisions that were made in August of oh-seven.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Does this amendment affect, thank you, Mayor, does this amendment affect the interest rate or any of the other issues that had come up originally?
Let's go to Marcia Elkins, Growth Management.
If you'll recall, this involved the financing of various aspects of this. There's been a number of amendments and revisions to the project plan. The third revision was done in August two thousand and seven, and again, in reviewing that allocation, there was movement of different costs among different various items, including the reallocation of funds from Luna Avenue. I'm not sure, Sam, that I'm answering your question, because I'm not sure I understand what you're...
Alderman Quaker, do, you have the floor, sir.
Is the applicant here tonight to present the reasoning for this?
I do not, uh, let's go, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney, and then we'll come back to you, Alderman Quaker, you'll have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I do not believe this amendment alters the interest rate that was established in the original agreement at all. The, the real nuts and bolts is that it allows the city to receive a portion of the payment since the city's now upfronting a portion of the costs. So, without this tax increment district, the, or with, I'm sorry, without this amendment to the developers' agreement, the developer will be entitled to all of the increment until they're paid in full, and the city will have to wait. With the amendment to the agreement, the city will collect its proportionate share of that revenue as it comes in.
Yeah, very good. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a very important clarification, and that, I very much appreciate that. So, if I could just have one more point of clarification is, if we approve this amendment, does it, does it change the project plan in terms of making it more expensive ultimately?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This amendment has nothing to do with, or this amendment does not alter the approved project plan in any way, rather, it alters the agreement that existed based on the prior project plan. All this does is implement the terms of the currently approved project plan. The council's already passed judgment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, one of the reasons this came without recommendation to, to, to
All this does is implement the terms of the currently approved project plan. The council's already passed judgment on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, one of the reasons this came without recommendation to, to, to the city councils, because we didn't understand it. And I don't know that, I appreciate our city attorney's explanation to the best it can do. It just, it's a point to the fact that in our tax increment district guideline committee meeting, I'm hoping that they're taking notes tonight, but this is an issue. It continues to be an issue with every TIF that we bring forward, that we don't have a specific go-to person to understand the ins and outs of each one of these TIFs, the analysis of how this changes. And we have to ask five different people and get different answers to how, or, I shouldn't say different answers, that's not appropriate, but would be to go to different people to find out how to understand it. There's almost impossible that, that our constituents can understand any of it. I, I just would like to make a suggestion for the, the guideline committee that they, that they really look hard at finding professionalism or on, on staff in our, in our city to be analyzing these from beginning to end. So when these changes come about, we don't have to sit up here and ask questions about, and, and get answers that we're not exactly sure we believe, or it's our opinion, or these types of things. If we have a professional analysis done upfront, when these changes come by, it's a lot easier for us to understand what the changes are, what they will be, how they affect the project, how they affect the taxpayers, how they affect everything on, so down, down the line, as is most, everything else on our agendas, except for this particular item. And with that being said, I'm, I'm going to stand with the, the fact that, and, and the explanation from our city attorney that it is, just changes that one item. But I am, I am going to keep pushing this item, pushing this issue forward, that we have some sort of analysis that's done by a professional in, inside of our staff that gives us the ins and outs. So when we come here, we're prepared, the constituents are prepared, that they can understand these tax increment districts at that time, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know I heard what Alderman Weifenbach said, but I, I don't think I've heard, I just want some clarification, and I'm coming to the defense of the staff here, that I, I think that we do get a professional analysis done. We might not always agree with that analysis that's put forth, and I think that's our right as policymakers in the city to say we disagree, and we won't vote for something. But I, I hope that it doesn't come across that what's being done by the staff in terms of preparation for all of this is not professional. I, I hope that that wasn't the intent.
Okay, motion, I'm going to remind everybody, the motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign an amendment to the contract. So if we could please limit the discussion to that. Let's see. Let's go back to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
I, I think Mr. Chapman made an important point. There is, it has nothing to do with our staff's professionalism in any way, shape, or form. It has to do with the process. The process is, is not put in place where we can actually analyze this thing and make a good decision. So that, that'd be my comment. It has nothing to do with the staff's professionalism or their ability in any way, shape, or form.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-five, please. I'm sorry, seventy-four.
Seventy-four and seventy-five, they'd like to send back to Legal and Finance in the applicant's request, if we could, for the tax increment number sixty-five for Plum Creek and Dennis Sanstra.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to send item seventy-four and seventy-five back to the next legal and finance, which is what, seven sixteen? Somebody have the date? Okay, sixteenth of July. Motion on the floor is to send these back to the Legal and Finance. And we have a second. Thank you. And we will limit the discussion strictly to whether or not it's appropriate to send this back to Legal and Finance. We will not be talking to the merits of these increments. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask that the originals and the amendments be linked when this comes back.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pointed out to my colleagues that this was at the request of the applicant, so I, certainly important to honor requests from applicants.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue, or actually to send both item seventy-four and seventy-five back to Legal and Finance on July sixteenth. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-six, please.
Seventy-six is to recommend that discussion of city staff being responsible for construction and installation of signage and striping in the public right-of-way required for subdivision be discussed in conjunction with the budget hearings. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second to send, basically send this to the city council during its budgetary hearings. Is that correct? And we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, you know, just from the look of what's, what the motion is, someone might say, well, why send it to the budget hearings? The recommendation came from Legal and Finance simply because it involved adding an FTE. So that was the reason we thought that it, it should go to the budget hearings.
Very good. Thank you. Motion on the floor is to send this to the city council during its budgetary hearings. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-seven, please.
Seventy-seven is a travel request for the South Dakota Municipal League Two Thousand Eight Elected Officials Workshop in Pier, South Dakota. Move approval?
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to ask for just clarification. Typically, when we have a travel request, we have a specific dollar amount, and my suggestion is, is that you attach a dollar amount of, say, a thousand dollars to allow any councilperson to travel to Pier for the workshop as long as it meets the other criteria established in the, in the council's current travel policy.
So maybe put up amount of five hundred dollars if we could?
I would suggest up to, up to a thousand in case more than one or two people want to go, because the traveling expenses are getting a little bit expensive.
Okay, for a thousand dollars on that request.
Okay, just for clarification on the motion. Motion on the floor is for approval of an amount up to, up to one thousand dollars to allow any council member, any member of the council to travel to Pier as long as it still meets the other criteria based within our adopted travel policy. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that the conference is this coming Friday, so I think that by now we should know who's attending. So I, my understanding is there's only one council member attending, so we could just.
I might, I may be attending also.
Okay.
Anything else, Alderman Quaker?
I just, I don't want to get into a big debate over, over travel on, on this particular issue, but I, I think, I don't know that a thousand dollars is necessary unless there's overnight, overnight stays or separate vehicles or whatever involved, so.
My understanding, it would be strictly for travel expenses and also meals during the day. Okay, yep, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Kreepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Is a thousand dollars going to be enough? How many people are going?
One for sure, possibly two. I know our new Alderman Patty Martinson is, is attending, and I possibly may be going. As basically, since I actually serve on the South Dakota Municipal League's Board of Trustees, and, and there's a possibility I may also be needing to go to Pier to talk about some other issues with the governor's office, so.
So a thousand dollars is more than enough?
Yep.
If it isn't, let's give enough. Thank you.
Just traveling expenses. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of up to a thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number seventy-eight, please.
Seventy-eight is amended resolution proving the authorizing and execution of a lease agreement and related documents and certificates, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Preston, can you please explain this, especially for those folks in the audience or those that are going to watch this?
Thank you, Mayor. Short explanation is this document authorizes the sell, this lease purchase as bank-qualified as opposed to non-bank-qualified, and we get a better interest rate by doing that.
So by?
I, Mr. Green may have further explanation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Preston clarified it perfectly. I just want to point out, there is a new resolution on the dais that says exactly that in a whole lot more words.
Very good. And everyone should have a copy, and it's identified as item number seventy-eight that was laid up on your, up in there. Let's see. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and this, this is for a new fire truck. Is it correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to have clarification.
Ladder truck.
Ladder truck.
Ladder truck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
That was my question, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-nine, please.
Seventy-nine is deny a request to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign directed trust agreement with the MG Trust Company LLC regarding the city's four fifty-seven B plan. Move approval.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll clarify in a second. Is there a second? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the item on the agenda, which is the denial motion. Is everyone clear on that? Because the motion actually is to deny a request to authorize the mayor or the finance officer to sign the directed trust agreement. So if you vote in the affirmative to approve the motion, that is a denying motion. Okay, is everyone clear on that? Okay, discussion, and I know that's where Deb was struggling a little bit. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the denial of the proposal. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with the recommendation that came out of Legal and Finance for denial, but in light of Deborah Weinert's asking tonight that we continue this item to give her attorney or the attorney time to come to town, I fully support, if we can find some solution, I, I'm not confident that we will find solution, but I'm not sure what another two weeks will do, I mean, to hamper this process if we continue the item. But I am in favor of the denial overall, but I will vote to continue the item. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue the item for two weeks, or to our next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the next council meeting. Okay, very good, which I believe is the twenty-first, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-first. Uh, discussion on the continuation motion only, please. Motion on the floor is a substitute motion to continue this to the next council meeting. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to the Public Works Committee items. Item number eighty, Mr. McCroy.
Approve a purchase order of a three-quarter ton pickup from McKee Ford in lieu of state bid vendor in the amount of eighteen thousand four ninety-four dollars for the water recommendation division. Move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I support purchasing this truck, and I support purchasing it locally. My concern is this, is that the, what we're voting on is permission to purchase the three-quarter ton pickup meeting the state bid specifications from McKee Ford for one dollar under the state bid price of eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. I am sure that there are more than, there is more than one place to buy, to buy a Ford pickup in the, in the Black Hills. Maybe there isn't, but I, I do not want another Ford dealer come into the council and, and saying that this, this was an unfair deal and that they were sidelined from it. So I, I'd like to understand the process here for us singling out one dealership and going to them and saying, we will, we will sell you this and under, you know, and basically, if you can beat the state bid price of, of one dollar. I mean, I, I don't want someone to come up here in a couple of weeks and say you guys are, are rating bids. I know that's strong language, but I, I, I support this, but I just need, if, if I can be assured that this was absolutely fair and that every single Ford dealership or car dealership in the Black Hills that could meet specs was given an opportunity to bid on this. Thank you.
Let's go to, is, was there a question in that, Sam? I don't want to, okay, and you'd like, I tell you what, let's go to Jim Preston. He has his light turned on. Let's go to Jim Preston, our city finance officer.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to respond to Alderman Quaker's concerns here, first off, this is off the state bid, and every vehicle vendor in the state of South Dakota has the opportunity to bid on the state contract for different vehicles. There'd been a practice of the City of Rapid City that if we have a local vendor that is willing to match the identical vehicle and the price, or even better than the price, we will bring that to the council for approval on that. So essentially, I do believe it is a fair system. That has been the practice for a number of years to do that. And certainly, I, I believe if somebody from Belfus or whatever came and said that they wanted to match the state bid, I think we probably would take, take a look at that or better it, but they have not approached us on that, that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to keep in mind that the state bid contract is an exception to the requirement that we normally would have to advertise and accept sealed bids for items that we're going to purchase. Essentially, it's an exception to the bidding process, and the reason it exists is because the state does that on everyone's behalf at the beginning of each year. So the state has also recognized that certain dealers have an inherent advantage because they're close to the state capital. So they allow any other dealer in the state that sells exactly the same product that's bid to meet the bid price and sell that to the local governing entities that can take advantage of the state bid contract. So I, I don't know that it's necessarily, well, in fact, I'm sure it's not required as a condition of the bid law to ask anyone else. As long as our local dealer will meet the price of the state bid contract, we have met the requirements of the law in regard to competitive bidding.
Yep, thank you. Uh, let's see here, uh, just proceed with it. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If not, we will go back to Alderman Sam Quaker. Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, I think, there you go. Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I'm just concerned about the, the appearance of this. I mean, I, I think that it's incumbent on the city to get the best deal for the taxpayers, and we know that, that the state contract offers, offers the ceiling. So I believe that it's incumbent on us to contact all the, all the possible dealerships that could fill the, could fill the specs and, and find out if we're, you know, if we're getting the, getting the best deal. But just, but imagine how this looks to another, another car dealer when they, when they see that we're just giving this business to one dealership that we've singled out rather than giving other dealerships in the area an, an opportunity. It just looks bad. And I just, I just want to make sure that we are, we are contacting other dealerships and asking them if they're interested in being part of this, part of this process. But let's be clear, that the verbiage that we're voting on very clearly says that we will give the, this, this deal to McKee Ford if they can meet the specifications for one dollar under the bid price. And I'm, what I'm hearing in the testimony is, is that we've not given that, or solicited that opportunity from other dealerships. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and, and let's see. Let's go to Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we bid this item out, Mr. Preston? That would be my question to Mr. Preston.
You can certainly ask that question. Mr. Preston, do you understand the question? The question was, could we have bid this out?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely, we could bid it out.
Is that a possibility right now that we can, if I made a motion to bid this out?
Mr. Preston?
You could reject this bid and then authorize staff to go out for bids.
I just have a sneaky suspicion with gas prices being four dollars a gallon, that there might be a dealership out there that might want to get rid of one of these for less. So I'd make the motion to bid.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to actually, okay, we're going to go to Jason Green. I think this is probably germane, so I think we can probably deal with this. So the motion is appropriate on the floor, and that is to reject and direct staff to go out for a bid.
I believe that that is appropriate because state bid is an alternate to the bid.
Very good, okay. With that, let's go to, and if we could, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
If we reject this bid and go out for the process, I guess I'd like to ask Robert Ellis, what's the alternative, and, and at this point, do you think what has done in this process so far has been a good process?
Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
Yes, we can certainly rebid this, reject this bid, and rebid it. Hopefully, we'll get some competitive bids across the region. I suspect that this is probably a fair, fairly good price. I guess I can't say for certain until we open bids, but we can do that. It is a time saver for staff. It does allow us to more easily purchase vehicles in a timely manner, so I, I do enjoy having the ability to go off the state bid contract. But we can certainly rebid it and see what the prices come in at.
So you're satisfied with rebidding it, and it's, the process is fine. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just, I understand we're talking about this one vehicle, but it, it would seem to me that the state contract was set up to expedite the process a little bit, and now we're saying, no, that doesn't work, so let's send these things to a bid. I, I guess my question for council members would be, i- is this now the case with everything that's on a state contract? Instead of just going with something on the state contract, we're going to say, no, let's bid all of these items, which seems to complicate the process, in my opinion. So I, I think it was set up, those companies that might be in Belfus or that might be somewhere else, that we're talking about doing some outreach to these companies, it would seem to me that in October or November of, of the previous year, when the state says, we're going to open up the state contract process again, get your prices in or get your information in if you want to be a part of the state contract, it would seem that that's when the outreach is done, and these companies, all of them, had an opportunity to do that then. Why are we now going back saying, no, scratch that whole process, and let's go with this bidding price? I, I will not vote to, to send this out to bid.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for a substitute motion. I'm just going to remind everybody, we are talking about a brand-new three-quarter ton pickup, and the state contract is eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. With that, let's go, further discussion. Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. Without belaboring the subject, I think Alderman Chapman hit the nail on the head. There is opportunity during the state bidding process for all involved. And that's where we need to offer the opportunity. We have done that. Let's allow for the expedition of this that was provided for by state law and approve this. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is a substitute motion to reject this proposal and to go out for bids. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor of that motion, please say aye. Opposed? Let's do a roll call, please.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach? Olson? Croker?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
LaCroy? Martinson? Hatcock?
No.
Herobut?
No.
Ocrepki?
No.
Very good. Motion fails on the seventy-three vote. We are back to the original motion, which is to approve the purchase of a three-quarter ton truck per the state contract. Everyone clear on that motion? Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. Item eighty-one, please.
Item eighty-one. First, I'll, I'll start out, I'll be abstaining from this, so I'll need a motion. This comes to, from Public Works to approve a stipulation at a request by Dream Design International, Inc. to consider application for vacation of drainage easement on Outlet C of Block Two of Northbrook Village. This is generally to be, being described as being located at one thirty-four Viking Drive.
Yep. Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second for approval of stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. How does this impact the density of, of the area if we vacate the easement to allow additional building?
Let's go to Marcia Elkins, Growth Management.
As was noted at committee, yes, this will increase the density by allowing for there to be additional home sites. I believe that we end up with two additional sites, not three.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. How many, how many sites do we have on, on one access point if this is approved?
Marcia?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. It will not result in more than forty dwelling units, though. It will be in compliance with our requirements.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And was this site originally slated to be the Parkland dedication for this particular development?
Marcia?
No, it was not. It was intended to be for the utilities and drainage and infrastructure that was necessary for this item. And if I might-
Please, go ahead.
I do want to make sure that the council's aware, as I explained at the committee level. This was not required to go through the full process and appear before you in front of city council. It could have been approved as a minor plat, which would have been approved administratively. I specifically requested that the developer bring this forward so that the council was fully informed of the fact that these sites, which had probably previously been identified as part of the utility drainage easements, would now be building sites. So I appreciate the efforts by the developer to make all of this transparent and appear before the council.
Thank you. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question and the drainage will now be allocated to where?
Marcia?
A portion of the site is being retained for utility and drainage easements. And the calculations provided to our engineers indicated that's adequate to accommodate the necessary drainage and utility improvements.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, anything else, sir? Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think most, Marcia answered most of my questions, but I, I would have a question for Marcia.
Okay, please state your question.
Will they be building structures in this drainage easement?
Marcia?
They will not be building structures in the drainage easement, but they will be building structures in areas that have been vacated from easements via this item and the previous item that appeared on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing it, Mayor.
Yeah, me too.
Try it one more time, Marcia, speak up.
Sorry, Marcia.
You bet. I'm not sure this is picking up. They will not be building in the drainage easements. Those will be reserved. And again, the calculations have been provided to staff that indicate that those areas are adequate. They will be building on areas that are being vacated from these easements.
Okay, Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
That was my concern. So the, the parts of the easement that we're going to vacate, they're going to build in?
Yes.
And that there will be enough retained for the drainage easements to meet the requirements as per the staff's review? Is that-
Correct. Our engineers have reviewed their calculations and they've demonstrated that there's adequate area retained for the drainage and the utilities.
Okay. Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
I see to the north of it, that's not developed. There, is that going to have an effect in the future on this?
Marcia? Do you understand the question, Marcia?
I'm looking at the exhibit, which does indicate that there is Lot Forty-three already developed directly adjacent to this. There are areas further north that have not been developed quite some distance.
That's my concern because I, I'm dealing with an issue in, in the south part of town, the same type of issue where there wasn't sufficient drainage. It was just looked at as, as a, a microcosm of the entire development. And development was allowed to go with, with drainage that was insufficient for the entire development. Now the city's coming back and having to, to fix all this at the tax period expense. And that would, that'd be my concern. If there's a drainage easement there already, I'm assuming that there was a reason for it to be there. And I'm just not, it may be over my head, Marcia, but I'm, I'm not sure. I, I just don't want to have to come back and-
Marcia?
Fix this same item that we're just allowing to let them build in.
I certainly don't believe it's above anybody's head and I, I don't want to imply that in any way, Mr. Wyffenbach. My understanding is that the applicant has submitted new information now, which identified the location that needed to be retained and that, that the engineers on staff have reviewed that and reviewed those calculations and feel that it's adequate. If you'd like me to put the aerial on the slide so you can see how the spits would be, the rest of the area, I'd be glad to do that.
That's fine. I trust your professional judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Was that with stipulations, if I'm not mistaken? Approval of stipulations. Any further, any further discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
I'm seeing what Mr. Wyffenbach's talking about. I guess my concern would be the same. Where are the drainage areas in this development if we are vacating a drainage lot in this area? Marcia, I think that would be some clarification for this development. Thank you.
Here's the agenda here.
Thank you, slide there, thank you.
What are you going to do when we take your slide projector away?
As soon as they figure out how the computers can do a better job than the law.
Thank you, Marcia.
Marcia, go ahead.
Again, this shows the area that is developed to the north of this, so it is not right on the edge of the developed area. But as I referenced, about a quarter of a mile to the north, there is additional land that will be developed. As you can see on the drawing, which is attached online, there is a portion of the area that is being retained, retained as drainage easement. And so that area is the area that would remain.
Okay. Deb, anything else?
So according to the drawing here, on this drawing, where are, I mean, you have it, you have the two lots that you're taking away for a drainage easement. Where are you putting the drainage? I guess I'm not getting it, once the lots are in there, where the drainage is going? Or how, how they're, I know we have a TIF on Country Road for some drainage, but I think that's further up. And are they going to retain the same type of drainage that we are doing in Brookfield as into Country Road to retain the same type of drainage?
Marcia?
And again, you have this in your packet. As you can see, this entire area is being retained as drainage. I can't read it on screen, that's why I have to pull it up on my computer to, to show the details. But again, this entire area is being retained as drainage. In terms of the additional areas to the north, each of those areas will be required to submit drainage master plans, just like any other subdivision, and address how their drainage will, will take, be routed through this. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
I guess if you go back to the plat, go back to the plat where the two lots are. I'm not trying to make this too hard. Show me on the plat where they have, where we're vacating the drainage. And on those plats, instead of showing me a blank piece, or two squares, go back to the plat where it says the drainage easement, where's the drainage going on these plats?
Okay, this is the plat, this is the lot. And this is the exhibit that's showing the portion that's being vacated. So the area that's being vacated is over here.
So those are the two plats that they're vacating.
This is the lot, Outlet C, Block Two. There was a previous item on the agenda that was related to this, which is the other lot. But again, Outlet C, Block Two is here. It's this entire area. As noted in the note, a portion of the drainage easement, as shown in plat book twenty-one, page one, something is to be vacated, this document. So this is the area that's being vacated. This is the area that's being retained as drainage easement. And the notes are on the document. This is the actual exhibit that will be recorded at the courthouse. So the, the lot as it exists is this large area.
Right.
So the portion that's being vacated is here. This will become the building lot on Outlet C.
Right. I guess in this whole area, all I see is houses and I don't see drainage area. I know we're vacating the drainage area that's in this area. But I don't see on this plat with this many houses, are they doing curb gutter and a storm drain that is draining to a certain area? Or are they doing digging ditches and, and having the drainage? I guess that's where I'm trying to go. You're vacating this and I got that portion, that you're vacating one, and the other side you're building on. But what happens to the drainage area if they're vacating the lots that are drainage? What type of drainage are they using?
Marcia?
I can't tell you the specifics of it. Mr. Dominic, or can you describe the specifics of how the drainage is being handled?
You know, I'm going to make a suggestion. If we're not ready to move on this, I'm going to ask for motion to continue this. We're going to burn up the next forty-five minutes talking about this. And Mr. Dominic, go ahead and answer, and then Chair's going to look for motion, continue this.
This street is already in place, has curb gutter side, or curb and gutter. The street going north and south has curb and gutter. There's a drainage easement with an outlet that goes out to a drainage channel that goes north along the back lot lines and then goes down like this into the major drainage area that's over in here. There's a detention area right there. Not too long ago, the city council approved a plat for that drainage detention pond to be accepted by the city as a drainage lot. So all this drainage is coming like it always has, only in a drainage channel over to here.
Thank you, Bob. That's what I was looking for. I was looking if we're doing storm sewer into a, a drainage area or if we're vacating a lot that needs to, to remain drainage. And I appreciate that explanation.
No, that does not need to be retained.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that this whole area out here has massive drainage channels going through it. And I think if you noticed on that lot that Marcia had up there, I think it was probably two hundred and forty-five foot deep, somewhere in that area there. I would say probably the normal city lot in Rapid City is probably a hundred foot deep. So there's no question that all, basically all the lots out there have a drainage easement going through them. And this one here is certainly going to have more than enough drainage going through it to not adhere or put damage on anybody else's property. So I would urge you to, to approve this motion because after you go out there, you're going to certainly understand that there's not an issue out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
My question was if you still wanted a motion to continue this.
See if we can get through this and-
Okay.
Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Are the owners of the neighboring lots aware, does the developer own all of, all of the lots at this point?
Marcia?
I do not believe that the landlord to the east is, the developer to the west is. And again, there's no notification procedure. So there would not be a notice sent to those property owners.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
I think that that alone signifies a justification to, you know, to consider a continuation. And imagine, I guess, the applicant unfortunately isn't here tonight, but I, I think it's only reasonable to ask whether the, the next door neighbor knows that this, this easement is being vacated. And if they don't, you know, that's, you know, that's not fair. This is, that, that would be a change that would directly, possibly directly impact them. So I think with that information, and I, you know, I, I think that a continuation is warranted. So I, I'd like to offer a motion to continue this item for two weeks.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to continue this item for two weeks. Is that correct, Alderman Quaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to the twenty-first meeting. Discussion, and we will talk about only the continuation motion only, please. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Based on the presentation that I was just giving, which I do understand now, it sounds like they do have the recommended drainage, storm drainage and detention ponds needed for out there for, to make an adequate drainage area. So based on that, I won't be continuant, just because I think the information was given good. Thank you, Marcia.
So to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I won't vote for the continuation either. You know, we don't make these decisions in a vacuum. And, you know, it, it's easy to say in this particular case, just because there's been discussion and, and a lot of discussion, that we then want to continue an item to notify people. What about the next situation tomorrow or next week? I mean, are we going to change the way that we do the whole process to, I mean, you can't notify these people tonight and then not notify the next one. So if we're not talking about changing the entire process, I, I, I think we can't make decisions in a vacuum. So I won't vote for the continuation motion.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for a continuation for two weeks to the July twenty-first city council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Wyffenbach? Olson? Croker?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Martinson? Hatcock?
Aye, or no, no, sorry.
Herobud?
No.
Crepkey? Chapman?
Motion fails. What was the count, seven, three?
Three to six.
Three to six. Who we missing?
Alderman LaCroy is abstaining.
Oh, that's right. I, my apologies, you're abstaining. Very good. Motion fails. We're back to the original motion. Original motion is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for maybe Mr. Preston.
Go ahead, please.
Once this drainage issue easement's given up and they plot this lot, who will own the drainage issue then? Or will it go back for back taxes eventually, or will it be turned over to the city?
Let's go to, how about Marcia Elkins? I don't see Mr. Preston. Marcia, can you answer that?
The entire lot is owned by DTH LLC. And once the easement is vacated, they continue to own it. They have the underlying property rights. It's just an easement for utilities and drainage that run across the top of the property. So DTH will continue to own it.
I just, my concern would be that they're plotting off that drainage issue, the drainage piece that we won't let them build on and let that go back to the city.
Marcia?
For the park or something.
Again, the item before you is just the vacation of the easement. It's not a replat of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just want to point out, and I, I asked others not be critical of me for mentioning this, but, you know, this is an item that was not on the consent calendar. And the applicant is unavailable to answer, answer questions. And I, I think that, you know, had I, had I known that there was a possibility of, of, of the neighboring properties not being aware of the vacation of the drainage easement that was pending, had I known of that possibility, I would have asked the applicant myself or asked at a, you know, at a previous meeting. But this is- asked at a, you know, at a, a previous meeting. But this is the type of question that could have been easily out, easily answered at this meeting. So I, I just, doesn't matter who the applicant is, I just, I, I just think that it's, it's only fair that when we have public meetings and it's, and it's, and it's not on the consent calendar, that, that, that's for a reason. And that it's only fair then to ask the applicants, show up to answer, answer questions. And I know that might be ruffling some feathers by saying this, but I think that that's a fair request. And that is going to be my request going, going forward. But here we are, you know, we're not, you know, if we vote to approve this now, in a sense, we're making a decision in a vacuum. And if we vote to continue this now, in a sense, we're making a decision in a vacuum, because we don't have the applicant here to, to answer some very straightforward questions. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Marcia, there was, this was advertised, it was discussed at Public Works? Is that?
It was noticed at, it was discussed at Public Works, yes.
Okay. So I mean, I just wanna make sure that there was, there was fair notice to the public. Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes with one, one no? Was it only one? Okay, one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Let's go on. Item number eighty-two. We're onto bids. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have five items on the bid list tonight. First item is the trailer-mounted vacuum system for water reclamation facility. We received one bid. Staff is recommending that this item be continued for two weeks to the July twenty-first council meeting.
Mr. Preston, just for, well, never mind. Motion is to continue this item to the seven twenty-one city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion?
It's not...
Yep, we're not up on the screen there.
Sorry about that.
It's all right, it's a continuation motion anyway. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number eighty-three, please. I have a note here that you also wish this item to be continued.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
It is a catonic sludge polymer water division.
We have a motion and a second to continue the, item number eighty-three also to the seven twenty-one city council meeting.
There we go.
Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighty-four.
Item eighty-four is a catonic polymer coagulant for the water division. We received three bids as listed. Staff is also recommending that it be continued to the July twenty-first staff.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item also to the seven twenty-one city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Nobody?
Thank you. Never, never say your vote doesn't count. All who's opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Item number eighty-six, please.
Item eighty-six is for portable chemical toilet facilities at various locations. We received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from A1 Portables Incorporated in the amount of five thousand one hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number eighty-six is for two new wheel loaders for the solid waste division. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending this item be continued to the July twenty-first council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item also to the seven twenty-one city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mayor's items, we have nothing. Council items and liaison reports. We're on to item number eighty-seven. This is reconsideration notice, and I don't think we've ever done this before, so let me just explain real quickly how this is. There was notice given to the chair at the last city council meeting of the intent to reconsider. So with that, the person making that notice will be given, given the floor, and it would be his option to move to reconsider. So let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. The request that I made at the last meeting was to find out whether the assessment for the fire district was per acre or the total charge. And the, the answer to that question was not available at the meeting, so procedurally, in order to get the answer and ensure that it wasn't going to lead to a, a real concern, I simply asked that it be noticed as a reconsideration, so that way if something came up, we could reconsider it. We have received the information, that two hundred dollar charge or somewhere in that range is a charge in totality and not per acre, and so there is no need to reconsider this item.
Very good. Now procedurally, just for the sake of procedure, we do need to open this up. Anyone else wish to reconsider? Because at this point, the motion would actually belong to the floor. So we would open it up to the, is there anyone else in the council that would want to reconsider this? If not, the motion will die. Let's go to Karen, did you wanna move to reconsider?
No.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no interest in reconsideration, the motion will die. And Jason, procedurally, how do we dispose of this?
You don't have a motion yet. What I would recommend is that the item be tabled.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. There is no discussion on tabling motions. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eighty-seven A, which is Alderman Quaker, Canyon Lake Spillway update. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote out over my lunch hour to take a look at the, at the spillway. And I don't profess to be an engineer or understand what was all done, but I was just wondering if, I did see, I did see a rooster tail or two out there, but things appear to have been mitigated to some extent, and I was just wondering if our Public Works Director would give us a very brief update on the success and the, how, where we go from here.
Okay, let's go to Public Works Director Robert Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The status of the Canyon Lake spillway repairs, we've done the emergency repairs. Quinn Construction, or excuse me, Core Construction did that project, completed it several weeks ago. They installed an emergency relief valve. They also filled the sinkhole with the bentonite, sand, slurry mix, and that did seal the rooster tail that was there. There might've been two rooster tails, one was very significant. It has reduced the size of that rooster tail. It's more of a kind of a dribble now as compared to what it was before. And I will note that all dams leak, so that's no exception here. That's just the nature of dams, they do all leak. However, controlling the leaking is what engineers try to do, and we have done that in this, this scenario. Where we're at now is, we'll be coming forward at the next Public Works Committee meeting with a design contract. We've gone through the consultant selection process, selected a design consultant to begin with the final repairs to the spillway, which could ultimately mean a reconstruction of the spillway. We have secured a grant, approval for a grant application in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. I will say that the design agreement is in the neighborhood of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so we almost completely covered that through the grant. There will be some additional money that will be, will be needed for that. Over the course of the design period, we will find out what the extent and cost of the final repairs will be. And as you know, we are requesting federal assistance on this project, so we're hoping to hear some good news from our delegation on receiving those benefits. So...
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. In, in past trips to the spillway, I've noticed, you know, fish at the bottom. I didn't see any fish today. I didn't really see much of anything. It was pretty murky. But I guess my, my question is, I'm, I'm assuming that what we've done has had some short-term impact on the, the fish population, but, you know, Will, you can you fill us in on how that will affect how, in the short term and the long term in terms of the, the fish at the spillway?
Mr. Ellis?
During the project, the emergency repairs we did, we did some monitoring of the water testing and submitted that to the state as a requirement of our permit. We passed that with flying colors, there were no violations. So I would say that our project really had no effect on the fish population. However, when we go through a reconstruction of the dam, if that is what is needed, there will be some effects on the fish population downstream, and that'll be part of the process our design engineer will look at, is how do we mitigate some of those? How do we work with game fishing parks to ensure that we're not doing any more damage than is necessary?
And again, I, I, I am not an expert at this, but when I, I saw fish before at the bottom of the spillway, and I don't see fish now, and I know that there's a, a season here, and I, I, I'm just wondering if, if there needs to be some restocking done in the, in the interim, or if we just wait until the rebuild is complete.
Mr. Ellis?
That's purely a, okay, yes.
I was gonna say, from someone who father absolutely loved the fish down there, the reason you don't see fish here is there's no water coming over the spillway anymore, and therefore there's no food source. So the fish have moved farther down creek. The amount of flow within the creek is still at the current level. It's actually being diverted around the top of the spillway. So the reason there's no fish there is you don't have the flow over the top of the, of the dam, and you don't have the food coming across, so...
So, thank you very much. So, so people ask, the bottom line is, is when the level increases, there'll, there'll be more.
They can, they'll probably be able to catch their limit there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
My family also fishes there, and they seem to be doing okay with the fishing. Good question, Alderman Quaker. I'd just like to thank Robert Ellis and his team for going out and working hard at getting the grants and doing the job they've done. I went out there as well one day, was freaking out, thinking there was rooster tails all over the top of that dam besides the little one. And if you look close enough, which I didn't get in the water, but it was little rock pebbles on there, so they were rooster tailing out. So I'm thinking, oh my gosh, that whole middle part has rooster tails in it. But Dale Tech assured me those were just little pebbles in the front of the, the dam, and I appreciated that. And I think they did a really good job. Robert Ellis went out there with us and explained where the belt bentonite was, and that the bentonite clay would not hurt the fish and the ducks and stuff that were out there. But I appreciate everything you've done, Robert Ellis.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Discussion on that. Let's go to Alderman Bob Robit.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we haven't got final numbers citywide yet, but I, I used to not see many rabbits around town. And now I'm seeing a lot, and I'm wondering if there's an impact on the rabbit population here.
Okay. Motion, motion on the floor is, is to acknowledge your report. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Rabbits are...
Okay. Robert, help us out here. Give us the twenty-twelve update, will ya?
For the sake of a short conversation, there have been no changes since the last twenty-twelve report, so there's nothing new to report.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is germane, but I'm gonna try it anyway. The National League of Cities was here last week, and I just wanted to thank the mayor for, we ended that session by going out, and what sparked that entire session was thinking strategically and thinking, and acting strategically. And the way we ended that entire session was by taking folks from outside of our community around to different twenty-twelve projects, and I'm not sure, I think we saw eight or nine different twenty-twelve projects. And email messages and, and notes have started to come in to me personally, just saying, tell us about twenty-twelve, how do you do this, what would we need to do, who do we need to engage in those conversations? So just from that session alone, others around the country are interested in that sort of forward-thinking in community. So I'd just like to thank the mayor for finishing up that session with the twenty-twelve projects.
My pleasure. Thank you. I guess a motion just to acknowledge your report. Okay, I need a first, though.
Motion to acknowledge your report.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. We have a motion, a second to acknowledge your report. Discussion on that. Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Are we gonna get a, a better update during the budget cycle on how these projects that are still outstanding, moving along, or did that happen? Or is there gonna be some other mechanism to make that happen?
Sure. Actually, since those are actually line items, we can certainly discuss twenty-twelve through the, through the budgetary process.
I'm just, I'm just curious to know how the, how the people or the projects that are still outstanding that haven't been started yet, where they're at, and if they're gonna make it. If they're not gonna make it, then do we wanna readjust the funding? And I know we had some talk on that already, but...
My suggestion is, is that's probably not appropriate for the budget hearing. That would be more appropriate for a twenty-twelve meeting. If, if you're asking for updates as far as projects, I think the appropriate thing to do is probably ask the, the council leadership to actually call another twenty-twelve meeting and actually ask for the updates. Budgetary process is probably really not the place to do that, so... Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report. Seeing none. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're onto the DARB. We're item number eighty-nine, please. Deb, could you read that in?
Eighty-nine is denied. Application for city license for private security, Quinlin Porter, 505 City Springs Road.
Do we have a motion, please?
I'm going to approve the application to overturn the denial.
I'm sorry. Bob, can you turn on your mic, please?
Motion to overturn the denial.
So the motion would be to actually approve the license for Mr. Porter. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Is there a second?
Oh, is, I'm sorry, and that is correct. Is there a second?
I'll second that in the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
The chief, or it wasn't actually the chief, but captain?
Captain?
I, I, I guess I'd just like to see the information that we made the decision to deny. I'm not necessarily comfortable, I mean, if you bring it to me at the DIAS or whatever the case may be, or whatever it takes, I'd just like to look it over. And I didn't get a clear picture of, I think that the applicant made it...
Let me make a suggestion here. If, if the council's desire to see additional information, instead of trying to do it on the fly here and putting Mr. Thrash on this, on the spot, why don't we send it back to legal and finance, and that way it can actually make it back through the process. Jason, would that be appropriate? That would give the opportunity for the PD to actually distribute all the information to the council members, and that way everybody could be informed.
I think I'd be prepared if I seen the information to make a decision. I have no qualms about that.
It's your, your call, Mr. You have the floor.
I guess I would yield the floor to the rest of my colleagues. I think that some of the information that was given to us is, this took place back in two thousand and two. Understanding when the gentleman may have been in college, I'm not interested in penalizing somebody the rest of their life for something they did in college because I don't think I'd buy beer. I guess I, I'm interested in seeing that information, so...
Deb, do you have a specific question, or?
My question would be, is what information did we use to deny?
Let's go to Mr. Thrash. Or, Jason, you wanna go first, or you want Mr. Thrash? Okay, let's go. Doug?
I have a distilled down, the report is quite long, and certainly welcome to have copies of them. I've distilled it down to all the involvements that we got on the background. I could, and I could start from the very beginning.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if this is...
I'm sorry, I'm not close to the mic here. I've distilled this report down into six instances that I'd be happy to share with you.
Well... Okay.
I'll yield the floor to my colleagues.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead. I see a number of lights here, and quite honestly, folks, I think if, if you wanna have a debate about this, that's fine, but I think it'd be appropriate to get the information and not try and make a decision from the DIAS. But we will go to the, let's go to the council. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is on the published agenda. We have the, the police department here and, and also the applicant here, and this is the place. And, and...
Deb, State Chair.
So I, I, I would like to hear the presentation from the, the police department on the reasons for this, for the denial.
With that, we have a number of other lights. We'll come back around. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna say a similar comment to Sam's. I, I mean, I think, you know, just to continue this item now, we've had, you know, Mr. Porter here waiting to have his item heard, and then all of a sudden we're gonna say, because we want more information, let's just, you know, send him home and he can come back and wait three hours next time we meet. No, if, I, I think part of this process, and maybe to help us out a little bit, is that maybe the council is really asking... maybe the council is really asking for, when we get a denial notice, that we get more information, so that we can have, I mean, maybe read that entire report prior to coming to this situation. So, maybe just a little helpful hint for all of us in the future is that we get more information up front, other than just a letter.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
I have one question for Mr. Thrash, and then, R., Jason, and then a comment. The private security license, is that renewed on a yearly basis?
Mr. Thrash?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question. First of all, everybody's had their ample time to get their information forward. It's nothing linked to the agenda. I did have an email, I can't access it, of Mr. Allender's comments, but in light of the, what's going on, you know, he states he's had two offenses, and he explained them, and there's other ones that were, they were arrests, but no, were not, no convictions, and I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to on the rest of the report. But in lieu of what's happened, I have no problem with approving the license. Knowing it's on a yearly basis, to me, that's like a probationary right now. In a year, if something happens, pull it. And that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Bill O'Krepke.
I do have a question for you, and I agree with some of my colleagues here. You know, we've listened to the applicant. I'd like to know why you are denying that, or you're recommending the denial. And I'm ready to make a decision tonight. I don't think we need to drag it on, we don't need to, you know, put the applicant any further along, or delay it, or make him wait, or whatever, so I'm ready to move on it. I know, I would like to hear from you, what's your reasons for denial?
Okay, Mr. Thrash. I tell you what, why don't we do this? We're gonna give him the opportunity, let's go through the whole board here, and then we're gonna, if we can, we'll give him the opportunity to actually present all the information. Let's go to Kieran Olson.
I'm with Mr. O'Krepke, just to read through the list of stuff.
Okay, and how about Mr. Herobut? Okay, let's go ahead. Mr. Thrash, if you could present the information, please.
The applications asked for arrests or convictions. I will present you the information, and then you can make a decision based on what I present to you. On nine eleven of nineteen ninety-eight, there was a charge of criminal damage to property in Cook County, Illinois, and he was found not guilty. On six-two of the year two thousand, in Cook County, Illinois, he was found in possession of marijuana and found, and pled guilty. Two-nine of oh-one, at the Western Illinois University, Illinois, he was charged with aggravated battery and obstructing justice. Guilty and was given one year of probation, supervisory probation. Eleven-ten of oh-six, he was charged with simple assault, domestic violence, and possession of a stolen pistol. That was dismissed. On eight-six of oh-seven, he was charged with disturbing the peace, which is a class-two misdemeanor, and he pled guilty and paid a ninety-four dollar fine. On twelve-nine of oh-seven, he was charged with two counts of simple assault at Teddy's. That was reduced to disorderly conduct, and he pled guilty to that. And that's what I have.
Okay, very good. Additional questions, if you would, go ahead and turn, I'm gonna give Alderman Herobut the last answer, and then we'll open it back up for further questions. Alderman Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this has been presented as a history of violence, and I'm not convinced that this isn't more so the story of a young man growing up. And I watched the applicant address us on this. I've long been among the more forgiving of those of us up here on the council, in part because I value forgiveness, because I think any one of us at some point in time has made mistakes that may have even disqualified us from this position. But the system that we have allows us to move on, and I think we've seen a showing from this gentleman, that he's moved into family man mode, so to speak, and offers a very genuine case as to why he should be considered for this. And I do appreciate, of course, the police department doing the investigation and bringing this to us, but I have argued in the past as to whether arrests should be considered, or whether they should be determinative, and I think this is a great example of why arrests perhaps should be considered, but should not automatically disqualify somebody. Most of this record is a record that was incurred in youth, that is now trying to be put behind a gentleman, and I, for one, will not stand in the way of that personal progress and that commitment to family. So, I, for one, will approve the license.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Once again, it gets back down to my original question. Why is the police department, having listened to all this, listening to the applicant, why is it that you're denying it?
Mr. Thrash?
The simple assault that happened in December of last year happened at Teddy's, which is a bar, the very environment that he wants to work in. So, we're just concerned that his judgment is not there to, if he fights in bars, now you want him to work in a bar. I just don't like that.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Captain, I have a question for you on, you talked about a charge in nineteen ninety-eight, which was dismissed, charge in two thousand, and marijuana, two thousand and one aggravated battery. Were either of those charges, the two thousand or two thousand and one, were either of those felonies, or were they misdemeanors? Do you know?
They were in Illinois, I'm not sure. I would guess that the aggravated battery for a minor, which he was at the time, is why he got suspension, or probation.
So, he was a minor at that time?
Yes.
So, are we requiring people to?
Wait a minute, let me rethink that. He's twenty-six now, and this happened in oh-one, so.
So, he would've been nineteen?
Yep.
I guess I'd like to ask the applicant whether you have been convicted of any felonies, and if you could answer that for me.
If you could, sir. The question, have you been convicted of any?
No, I've never been convicted of a felony, jar.
Thank you.
So, the aggravated battery charge was a misdemeanor?
It was a misdemeanor.
Sam, you still have the floor, sir. Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Jason, is this one of those licenses that come up every year based on background checks?
Jason?
Yes, it is, as the ordinance exists today.
So, in one year, he would come up annually for, to see if he has any violations of this license? Am I correct?
Jason?
Actually, in this case, the license would be up in December thirty-first, and he would have to renew at that time. That renewal would be for one year.
Okay. Based on that information, I'm willing to give this man a chance. It gives him a year to either show us that he can do this, and he has corrected himself and is ready to do what he needs to do for this license. And he will come up in a year, and that will prove to us, and hopefully himself, that he's ready to change and do the right thing. So, I'm in approval of this license, and I appreciate Mr. LaCroy bringing this up, and Mr. O'Krepke with his information that he has. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my question would be for Captain, and in December, the simple assault, disorderly conduct, can you explain the circumstances somewhat?
Captain?
It occurred at Teddy's Bar. There was many people involved in this. Two other people were with Mr. Porter. There was a husband and wife that were assaulted, and he was charged with that. It was plea bargained with the state's attorney's office. The lady was semi-conscious when we arrived, and the husband was punched.
You still have the floor, sir.
I've been known not to overturn these, to be honest with you, and I'm not comfortable under those circumstances, but. There's a difference between arrested, and there's a difference between convicted, and obviously, this is a conviction, if someone evidently got hurt, and I would too, I'm not the judge, that's a tough thing, but I am, you know, required here to make a decision either up or down on whether I think that Mr. Porter should have a security license. I'm assuming allow him to be an abounser, is that what we're looking at here?
Yes.
Usually, when people get arrested for things, they're required to go through some sort of anger management program, or something like that, is it, would that be the case in this situation, or you may not know?
It'd be up to the court to decide that.
Mr., can I have Mr. Porter? I need to ask Mr. Porter a question.
Go ahead, please, ask your question.
Yes, sir.
Is it Quinnlin? Is that Quinnlin?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Quinnlin. My question to you would be, I mean, why do you feel like you, why do you feel like we should overturn this? I mean, you obviously have some anger management issue, and like I said, I'm not the judge, Quinnlin, and I'm not here to chastise anybody, I just, I have some cloudiness that I have not done this in the past, overridden one, and I just, I'm not comfortable with it, and I.
A little more on that clarification for the Teddy's Night incident. I was.
If you could, please, if you could address the question that he asked.
I believe that his uncomfortableness was regarding the Teddy's Night incident in somewhat. I don't think that the total picture was clarified exactly. I was being charged, not with being involved with the woman at all, but being involved, I was charged for stomping the male subject. Myself and both of my brothers was being charged for stomping the male subject, that's what the specific charge was for myself, and it was a charge that's kind of ironic, because it was an assault charge with no physical bodily harm done, and myself, being the smaller of my two brothers, one is six-three, two-seventy, the other one is six-seven, four-hundred pounds, for us to stomp a guy, and me get charged for stomping this guy with no bodily harm done, that's kind of far-fetched, but I could not fight that case.
Yeah, Ron?
Kick him or something. But my question, I have, is, do you have an application pending somewhere for a job?
I'm actually, I'm actually working right now.
Where?
I work at Green Tree Servicing Company. And I was looking to work at Dublin Square as a part-time job on the side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, I think I heard a city attorney say that this, if we overturn this, that this is approved through December of this year. And at that point, if there's an incident between now and December, there's a review or renewal process that would come up again. So, it's not actually approving a license for a year, but approving a license for the balance of this year. I'm not a judge, I'm not gonna try to stand here and judge Mr. Porter, but I would just hope that if this council overturns the decision made by the police department, that you would take that into consideration as you go out and you do security work if you get the license. Just having said that, I, you know, I think there's other part-time, meaningful work out here as well. That's my comment.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Kieran Olson.
The incident I'm most concerned about is the eight-six-oh-seven domestic situation. Domestic violence is always a concern to me, and of all the things that can occur, my impression is that that requires anger management programming.
That was dismissed, and I don't know the details on that. That's, I don't know why that was dismissed, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor. Let's see, is that a substitute motion, is that correct? Substitute motion on the floor is to overturn the recommendation and approve the license. Everyone clear on that motion? Additional comment? Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for our city attorney. We don't routinely see these, so if, what's the process going forward? So, Mr. Porter gets approved, if there's no incident, I take it the police will then just approve those licenses again, or what's the process after this?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, you're right. The council does not routinely see security licenses. If the police chief grants the license, that's the end of the matter. The only time you will see one is if the chief denies a license, suspends a license, or recommends non-renewal of a license. Those are really the only times they come to the council level. Otherwise, it rests in the hands of the chief of police.
Malcolm, you still have the floor, sir. Motion on the floor is a substitute motion to approve the license, in other words, reverse the recommendation of the PD. See no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Olson. Boger. Quaker.
Aye.
LaCroy. Martenson. Hatcock.
Aye.
Herobut.
Aye.
O'Krepke.
No.
Chapman.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
Motion passes on a six-to-four vote. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number ninety, please.
Number ninety.
Number ninety, it is a notice of appeal from requirements of the Rapid City Sign Ordinance, chapter fifteen-point-two-eight by Lamar Advertising for off-premise sign ten-thirty, West Main Street, described as lot seventeen-dash-twenty, located Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota.
Can we have a motion, please?
Move to continue.
Second. Motion, okay. We have a motion, a second to continue. Discussion on the motion, let's go to Alderman Bob Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I was just now able to view this proposed sign location today, and it happens to be directly across the street from my property. I am inclined to think that this is a very reasonable request that allows for a reduced sign and a much cleaner sign, which would display static, not flashing or animation, but I want, I think some of the council people have been concerned that this came unanimously from the Sign Code Board of Appeals, and I'm just gonna confess, I wasn't, I sit on that, but I was not at that meeting, and I'm pretty sure that would not have been a unanimous decision had I been there. I urge my colleagues to consider this location, to consider that it would be, I believe, twelve percent smaller signage, and yet, again, the clean and not flashing. But the point is, for the continuation, is just to give us a couple weeks to get our arms around this before we vote on this, because I think it's a very responsible proposal that we need to make sure and get enough information to consider completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, let's go to Bill O'Krepke.
Yeah, well, I'm ready to move on this one, again. I think, having looked at the sign, having looked at what they're trying to do, it certainly just makes sense to me. Here we have an opportunity to replace a structure that isn't, that would be very appropriate to be replaced. It's been welded, it's been repaired, and what this request is, is not only to reduce the signage, but it's also to make the structure safer, more stout, and it's just a good project all the way around. The sign itself is going to be, you know, it's not a moving kind of sign, it's a static, and I think that would enhance what the area. So, I think between the improving of the beauty, improving of the structure itself, I think it's a good thing. I'm not sure what the extra two weeks is gonna do for us, it's been there, but, you know, I'm not opposed to continuing it, but once you go there and take a look at it, and see the structure, and talk to the applicant, I think you're gonna come to the same conclusion that this is something that, it's a very good idea. So, I'd encourage my colleagues here to, if you're not ready to move on this tonight, at least take the advantage to take a look at it and see what kind of ad. at least take the advantage to take a look at it and see what kind of ad, advantage this is going to be, not only for the safety, but for the beauty of the area. That's my comments.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve the applicant's request.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion, which is for approval of the appeal, in other words, granting of the permit, okay?
If I could, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
I'd like to explain my position, because I was one of the ones who had initially expressed significant concern regarding this, and I, I think that the, the safety aspect of being able to take down, and also partially there's aesthetic benefits to taking down an old billboard, that's already, pieces of it have already fallen down in the past, and, and rebuilding it at a smaller size is a, is a good thing, a good thing for the community. There's no doubt, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm, I am at, at that Sign Code meeting, but there, there is no doubt in my mind that perhaps part of the concern on the part of the board members is, is the, is that the city hasn't, hasn't truly taken final action on the whole issue of, of animated billboards and LED billboards. There's been some discussion regarding brightness, but overall, that issue still remains somewhat of an open, an open question. That isn't the, that isn't the question that should be answered with this particular situation. I think that what we're looking at here is a, is a real benefit of, to the community in taking down an old sign and replacing it with something that looks nice, and there, there will be a public safety and aesthetic benefit to it as well. So based on the information I have, I think this is a reasonable, a reasonable proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not on the Sign Board of Appeals, so I didn't have to be at the Sign Board meeting. But I will say this, the whole point of the sign ordinance, this is a sign that is not in compliance, this is an off-premise sign. And because it's an off-premise sign, the whole purpose of the sign ordinance was to bring signs into compliance as the opportunity arises. And what's proposed here is a major change to this sign, and we have to give an exception. We have an opportunity to improve our community by adhering to the spacing, and this sign violates the spacing for an on-prem, on-premise sign. And I would look to our city attorney to further explain that particular.
Did you have a question as far as spacing?
So my point would, if, if Jason would explain what the spacing requirements are under the sign ordinance.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, there are actually two spacing requirements in the Sign Code. One is measured down the street, if you will, and that spacing requirement is a thousand feet. There's also what I call the circle requirement, that is within five-hundred feet of the billboard. If you drew a circle around it, radius five-hundred feet, there can't be one within that distance either. So it's two ways to measure distance. I believe under either one, the existing sign is a legal, non-conforming sign.
Okay, thank you, let's go back to Alderman Olson, you still have the floor, ma'am.
My point is that the community supported the sign ordinance, which were, which were calling for changes, fewer signs, and we're not talking about an on-premise sign, this is not a sign advertising an on-premise function, this is an off, this is a billboard, and this is an off-premise sign. So it isn't advertising any of the businesses that are immediately adjacent. And it probably should be noted that this sign has had nonprofit kind of advertising on it, and one of the stipulations is billboards that I believe are, are vacant with no signage on them at all, after ninety days, I think that there is a requirement that they come down. So I think part of the reason that this has had nonprofit advertising on it for some period of time is a problem with the fact that this board doesn't function very well and isn't serving any public purpose, or isn't serving a purpose within the community. So I think this is our opportunity to, to apply the Sign Code and reduce one more billboard in our community. And I've, I've had a conversation with Mr. Olson, but I feel very strongly that this is a chance for us to put our, to follow our ordinance and make the kind of changes that our community supports in terms of reducing billboards throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Olson, I'm probably going to ask him to come forward, because I got a couple questions, uh, I think will help shed a little bit of light here, because I bounced back and forth on this issue, and I'm not real familiar with the sign ordinances, but in, in a conversation that I had with Mr. Olson, I, I talked to him about my feelings on billboards and billboards outside the city, billboards within the city, and, and I have real heartache every time I drive down the interstate and I see the boom, 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 the billboards that are, I mean, in conjunction with, in a row, and how unfortunate it is to our community that that has happened. On the other hand, I've, I've, I've seen that the sign ordinance that's been put in place allows, when, when, when you're working with, with sign companies and you're trying to work within the realms of their business, and it's not Rapid City's position to put business people out of business, the Sign Board or the ordinances come up with, with the, with the idea of credits, and which credits are, is when people remove, remove signs, they are issued credits for removing their signs, and I'm not sure how many credits are issued, I mean, I would pose that question to Jason, how many credits are issued to somebody when they remove a sign?
Jason?
If memory serves correct, it's two credits for removing a sign, one credit for downsizing a sign.
Okay. So in essence, our, our ordinance does work. I think that, you know, in, in talking to Mr. Olson, I think Lamar has been fairly responsible, which is, is always an important factor when I make a decision, if I'm going to overturn something or not overturn something, is I look at their, the responsibility that those, those parties have played in the situation. And my question to you, Mr. Olson, Mr. Mayor, would be, how many, how many credits do you guys have at Lamar Advertising?
And Mr. Olson, do you know how many sign credits you have?
We have sixty-six. We have been, we have thirty-three billboards have been eliminated.
Well, the question, and I don't mean to get sixty-six, thank you.
Thirty-three have come down.
And those are within the city limits?
Yep. Mr. Wyfenbach?
I would imagine they're probably not within city limits, I'm not going to pose that question, but I do understand that there's consecutive four billboards coming down outside the interstate that you won't be replacing, which I think is responsible on your part. Inside the city, I'm, I'm a little bit more, you know, I don't, I don't really love signs, I, I do like the opportunity, if we have the opportunity, to make a sign look nicer. I know on Mount Rushmore Road, I drove by that sign for probably twenty years, the big, I mean, the sign was so ugly and huge, and you guys were responsible, took it down, put a nice LED there where that big sign was. I think that if I had my brothers, I'd rather have you guys take it down, and I don't think that's a possibility, I don't think that's going to happen. We have the opportunity to, to fix something that we ain't going to change. If we, if we don't allow this exception, that ugly sign with the ugly pole is going to stay, because it's, in a business standpoint, it would probably be infeasible to try to replace it and make a nice sign pole and a nice sign. That would, and I guess my appeal would be to the council, and I'll probably yield the floor to them, that say, I understand this sign's not coming down. I mean, we have the opportunity, unfortunately, to replace it with a, a nicer-looking sign. You know, we can't move the building, that's, that's not going to happen. Obviously, the sign's not going to come down. I would, I'd like to look at maybe some alternatives of, of using some of your sign credits to, you know, come with some kind of conclusion that says if we could use X amount of sign credits, we could allow you to replace that billboard, you know, and, and as long as it was conjunction with replacing the pole and having a nicer looking sign, I could probably do something like that if, if one of my colleagues had that proposal. That way would eliminate a sign in the future, because with those credits, my understanding is you have the ability to build new signs, and if we can take those away from you, we can eliminate more signs in the future. So that'd be my comment, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Just a question for Mr. Olson.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Olson, on this sign, I thought when we had visited with you this morning, a couple of us, that you could build this sign without the LED and that the Board of Appeals would agree if you didn't put a LED on there.
Mr. Olson, you understand the question?
So you can redo this sign, just in paper and not putting an LED on there, am I correct?
That was one of the concerns of the Sign Code Board of Appeals, that we were going to put an LED on there.
Right.
Or digital on there.
But at this point, you can put, you can redo the sign and put a, just a regular paper sign on there and be conforming, right?
No, I cannot.
They're going to make you take down the whole sign?
Um, if, if, if I lose here, I'm going to leave it the way it is.
Okay, I guess my concern, and I had voiced this this morning, is you have two other locations on this block that you could put LEDs as well, and to me, to leave it like it is in lieu of putting three, three LEDs on this block was, and I, I had voiced that concern, was my main issue here, so I won't be approving this, because I think if we have three LEDs in one block, it's going to be overdone, so I appreciate your answers, Mr. Olson.
Let's go to Alderman, let's see, I think both of you spoke, so let's go to Alderman Bob Robid.
Thank you, Mayor, just, just very, very succinctly. First of all, the fact that these are LEDs, I think misleads people into thinking that they will be bright and flashing, and I think if we look at the one by the Cold Stone, and also the one on Mount Rushmore Road that Alderman Wyfenbach alluded to, these look like billboards when you drive by, and you hardly even notice that they're electronic, but they do have the added advantage of allowing for rapid, whether it be emergency response or amber alert, and they also are smaller and look nicer. And so the bottom line here is, this billboard is not coming down. Traffic counts through the gap, I happen to know this because I live across the street from it, are twenty-five thousand cars eastbound a day and twenty thousand cars westbound a day, right in the gap. That is not a sign that's going to be abandoned by any, any business-minded company. We have the option to vote for an improvement to an existing sign and a reduction in size. This sign has come down before, it's been rewelded four different times. This is also a safety concern, but the bottom line is, we have the choice of sign as it is or sign better. I think we should choose sign better.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrebkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief too, and I'm, I'm just hoping that my colleagues can see the advantage of, of an opportunity that we have to take an old billboard and replace it with something that's not only new, that looks better, but is safe as well. So I'm hoping that, that we can act on this and, and approve this. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Deb Hattcock.
Based on the information, he can put a paper one up, but his, in order to make the money that he needs to make, the LED makes more sense. So he can put the same kind of sign and redo this, it's just that he can't do it and make money, which I understand, and I understand that business part, but you're going to have a sign thirty feet up with LED and you have people living right, what, half a block way across the park there, that's one LED in front of them, and about a half block down, another, three-fourths of a block down, you're going to have another LED, so to say that this won't affect the people that are across the street with a thirty-foot one up in the air, I think is, is not, what I'm thinking is a, is a positive thing for that area, let alone the gap.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will not be voting to, in the affirmative on this, and I just wanted to state why. I think a lot of heavy lifting and a lot of work goes into the, the process of creating ordinances and creating all of this work that we do, and then just to say, well, let's get a variance to change something, I, I tend to disagree with that. I, I agree with Karen when she said a lot of work went into this, and the community, the council bought off on it, the sign companies bought off on it. So, you know, I, I think in, in that regard, all of the work should go in prior, and then let the sign companies live with what we've created. If, if they want to make changes to a non-conforming sign, to me, they're, they, they can change that sign, they can improve that sign and leave it as paper, they choose not to, because I understand the economics of it. So to say that, you know, make the sign better or make, or leave it worse, I, I don't know if that's fully accurate. They can change that sign today to make it better if they so chose. If they want to come into conforming with that sign, it, it's got to go to thirty feet. I, I don't see thirty-eight feet as being any, any improvement, so I won't vote for approval of this.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to actually approve the request. Any further discussion? Seeing no additional lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Rogar?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Martenson? Hattcock? Hattcock?
No.
Crowe-Bud?
Aye.
Ocrebkey? Chapman? Wyfenbach? Olson? Mayor, you have a tie vote.
Okay, motion fails. We are back to the original motion. Let's see, we do not have an motion on the floor.
No, additional motion.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor of denial. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Quaker?
No.
Lacroix?
No.
Martenson?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Crowe-Bud?
Aye.
Ocrebkey? Chapman?
Aye.
Wyfenbach? Olson? Rogar?
Motion passes on a seventy-three vote, the request is denied. Thank you, everyone. We are on to, let's see here, we are on to the CIP Committee Reports, Public Hearing Items, item ninety-one through one forty-one. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on item ninety-one through one forty-nine. We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are in the open public comment period. We do have a speaker request form on item one oh seven from Jim, it looks like Peterson from Hill City, is Jim still with us? Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, item one oh seven, this is your opportunity?
Don't really have much to say, other than answer questions.
Okay, just answer questions, very good. We also have a speaker request form on item one oh seven, it looks like Robert Livingston, also from Hill City. Very good. That is an item one oh seven. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Now, at this point, we do not close the public comment period until after we take up items one ninety-one through one thirty-one, which is the public, this is the continued public hearing consent, and I'm going to turn to Marcia and ask her items to be removed.
Staff would request that items one oh seven, one twenty, and one twenty A be removed.
One twenty A, correct? So, items one oh seven, one twenty, and one twenty A, Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar. Let me ask, any other items that the council would wish to be pulled from the consent calendar, items one, ninety-one through one thirty-one? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent item calendar? Yep, I'm sorry, Sam, I didn't see your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. And one twenty-five. So the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendars, item ninety-one through one thirty-one, with the exception of one oh seven, one twenty, one twenty A is an apple, and one twenty-five. Could have that motion. We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, right? Everybody's getting tired, I can tell. Okay, we are on to item one oh seven, please. And let's see, that is a preliminary plat. Mr. Lacroix, if you could.
Request by Renner and Associates for Rob Livingston for a preliminary plat, and this is located on the northern terminus of Strato Rim Drive. Motion be removed. that crossed the plat, the developer has looked at that and rather than have that access easement, they have brought forward a modification, which is reflected in the stipulations that have been passed out on the dais, that is now gonna be in a pedestrian easement, and so it no longer needs to be built to city street standards, and there will be a utility easement retained, so staff in rare instances recommending that there be, this be approved with modified stipulations to reflect that change, then also the related items are, 120 is to approve in part and deny in part with stipulations, the subdivision variance, as well as authorize the mayor and finance officer then to sign the waiver of right to protest the assessments for some of those improvements, so with those changes, we would ask for your approval, I do need to make you aware of the fact that the improvement, the agreements were not all in place until today, and as such, I'm required to notify you that it's up to you as to whether or not you wish to act on these items.
Thank you, motion on the floor on Item 107 is for approval with revised stipulations, further discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Marcia, you said with revised stipulations, but I, and I take it that that means that all those stipulations have been met, because that was the reason to continue the item till the 21st.
Marcia?
All of the stipulations that need to be met prior to preliminary plat action by the city council have been met, if you make the modification, it's been identified with the changes and strikeovers in the recommendations.
Okay, thank you, so the motion on 107 is for approval with revised stipulations, any further discussion on that motion, any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are on to Item 120, please. Mr. LaCroy, if you could read that in for us, please.
It's a request by Renner and Associates for Rob Livingston to a variance to subdivision regulations to waive the requirements to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light, conduit, water, sewer, and pavement as per Chapter 16.16 of Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is located in northern terminus of Strato Rim Drive, and this would, comes forward with, to, recommendations to approve in part with stipulations and deny in part as per Planning Commission's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve in part and to deny in part as per recommendation by the Planning Commission, any discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Item 120A, please.
To authorize the mayor and officer, finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest future assessment for street improvements, and move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Item 120A, please.
To authorize the mayor and officer, finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest future assessment for street improvements, and move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Unanimous.
We are on to Item 125, please, there again, Mr. LaCroy, could you please read that in?
This is a request by Whittingham and Lesteridge LPI for a preliminary plat, and this is located on the intersection of US Highway 16 and Cantrum Boulevard, and this is...
Motion should be to continue to August 4th, is that correct, Marcia, is that the recommendation?
I'd beat my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the August 4th, 2008 meeting, discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor, I support continuing this, this item, but I believe that this item has been on the council agenda a number of times, and I'm just, I'm just, and this is an important subject relating to the Walmart site, I know a number of people have related concerns regarding the process, and I'm just wondering if, if we have a schedule or a timeline as to when either this will come forward for an up or down, up or down vote, or be removed from the agenda.
Marcia?
To date, staff has not received the additional information that's required to allow this to move forward, and we do not know when that will be submitted.
Alderman Quaker, sir, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor, so this has been continued for, since at least last fall, or is that?
4/7.
Do we have a date?
Date of application, page of staff.
So, this has been on an official agenda, continued a number of times since May 11 of 2007, not singling out this particular issue, but I am gonna point out that this isn't a good way to do business, to be continuing and continuing and continuing, I think, I think we need to determine where this is at and ask the applicant to either remove this from the agenda and bring it back when they're ready to submit the information, but you know, it's no small wonder that we have 200 to 300 items on every council agenda when we have so many of these types of items that we just continue repeatedly, and then that puts the members of the public in an awkward position because they need to make the decision whether they want to attend meeting after meeting after meeting until 10:30, 11:00 at night to see if the item that they're interested in is going to be acted on, so I just, from a process standpoint, I'm concerned with how this is moving through, I support continuing it, but in August, I'm going to ask, if it's on the continuation calendar again, I'm going to pull it off and ask where we're at, thank you.
Thank you, just a reminder, motion is for continuation, let's go to Alderman, or Alderwoman, Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with Alderman Quaker that this is a disservice to the general public, I, I do not observe the Diane Dolls here this evening, but she attends many meetings watching this item with care, and I think that it does make it difficult for the general public to keep track of something that keeps being continued in this fashion.
Thank you, motion on the floor is for continuation, let's go to Alderman, Bob Crowe.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I say simply, me three, I agree with the two concerns that have been leveled, thank you.
Okay, on the continuation motion, let's go to, you guys, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I know that there's been a process that we follow, and I know that a lot of times, up or down vote is, is what we're interested in, and is there, I have a question for our city attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just, I'll, I'll make the obvious question, is it related to the continuation motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good, please ask your question.
For me to vote on a continuation motion, I have to understand, is there a timeframe that this thing, we can continue this thing, or can we continue it into eternity?
Sort of like this meeting. Jason?
So long as you have the consent of the applicant, you could continue it into eternity, but you're not obligated to do that.
Thank you for that concise answer.
Mr. Weifenbach, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, thank you, let's go to, okay, very good, thank you, Malcolm, motion on the floor is to continue this item to the August 4th, 2008 council meeting, any discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, that does bring us to the end of the consent, public hearing consent items, Ian, the Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing for Items 91 through 149.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes, we're on to the consent public hearing items, this is Items 132 through 140, the Chair would ask, are there any items that need to be pulled from Items 132 through 140, I'm showing probably 132.
Yeah.
Any others, let's go to Ron Weifenbach.
Yep, okay, any others?
Trying to take mine out.
Oh, well, get you cleared off, there we go, okay, so, any additional items to be pulled from the consent public hearing items, Items 132 through 140, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, Item 132 through 140, with the exception of 132.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes, Item 132, Alderman, or Alderwoman, Hattcock, could you please read that in?
132 is the Scottish and Irish Society for Special Beer License for an event scheduled August 29th through the 30th, 2008, in Memorial Park, may I move approval?
Second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, I thought we were gonna, was this for continuation?
Yes, please, we would recommend this be continued to your next meeting to allow the 11/6/19 South Dakota codified law, application to be considered by the Planning Commission will be considered on Thursday.
Substitute motion to be there.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second to continue this for two weeks, is that correct, Marcia? Okay, any discussion on the continuation motion, let's go to Alderman, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but in order for me to vote on this continuation, I have to understand one thing, at, at what point do we look at these beer events and say, why don't you just get a regular beer license, like everyone else does, I mean, I mean, yeah, there's people that go through a lot of hoops to sell beer, that's our livelihood, and yet we continue to approve all these special beer licenses for, in the park, in the, I mean, in the streets, and I'm not opposing against them, I'm just wondering where we draw the line on how many, I mean, how many can we approve, eventually we could approve somebody for a lot of different occasions, and we're, you know, the people that have establishments open during the wintertime, during the summertime, and they're, they're, you know, they're getting dipped into every time we approve one of these, I don't have an issue with this particular one, I just had that question, and I would pose it to, I guess, my council, my colleagues, thank you.
How about, let's go to Jason Green, he has a light on, very good, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, from a legal standpoint, there's no limit on the number of special licenses, either that the council can issue or that an individual or a group can apply for and receive, so it really is a matter of policy for the council to decide among yourselves.
I, I have another question, I guess.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Is there a period of, like, a period of time that it could be approved for, or is there a limit in that period of time?
Jason?
I believe it's a maximum of 15 days.
15 days? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, motion on the floor is to continue for two weeks, any additional, is that 21st, to the July 21 city council meeting, any additional questions or comments? Any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, somebody need to abstain? Okay, I just wanna make sure, okay, and let's see, we are on, that takes us to the end of this, end of the consent public hearing calendar, we're on to the non-consent public hearing items, Item 141, please, Mr. LaCroy.
It's a request by Advancing Engineering Surveying and DC Scott Surveying Inc. for blue new enterprises to, for amendment to the adopted conference plan to revise major street plan to relocate a collector's street, this is located on west side of Deadwood Avenue between Lane Street and 1543 Deadwood Avenue, motion be for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous vote, okay, Item 142, please.
It's a request by, by the city of Rapid City to consider an application for amend, amendment to the adopted conference plan to revise the major street plan by realigning Arterio, Arterio and Collector Street, and this is described as being located in the portions of south and southwestern Rapid City, motion move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Thank you, opposed? Motion passes, Item 143, please.
Request by the city of Rapid City to consider an application for amendment to the adopted conference plan to revise the major street plan by realigning Arterio and Collector Streets, and this is being located one-fourth of a mile east of Reservoir Road, excuse me, this is located, South Dakota Highway 44, more generally described as being location in portions of north and northeastern Rapid City, move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes, Item 144, please.
It's a request by Justine Schaefer and Scott Mueller for Menard Inc. to consider an application for fence height exception to allow fence height over eight-foot height, and this is located at the intersection of England Street and Anamosa Street, move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Item 145, please.
It's a request by Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services Inc. for the city of Rapid City to consider an application for a fence height exception to allow an eight-foot high fence in lieu of a six-foot high fence, and this is being located south at the intersection of Interstate 90 and Elkville Road, approximately three quarters mile, the motion be to approve with stipulations, and that stipulation is 146, I believe, right?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulation, and the stipulation being outlined in, on the former 146, let's go to Robert Ellis, our public works director.
I did just have to recommit on that stipulation, the meaning stipulation is vegetation around the perimeter fencing of that parcel property, it's approximately 1,500 feet of fencing, so that's a little over a quarter mile, would also require the installation of an underground irrigation system, and our estimated cost for that would be $25,000, so just wanted you to be aware of the cost of that stipulation, so.
I thought that was just around a square fence of that property.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval with stipulation as outlined previously in Item 146, discussion on that motion, discussion on that motion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with, okay, we've, let's take a roll call here, please.
No.
Crowe? Aye. O'Kreppke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Weifenbach? Olson?
Aye.
Rogar?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Looks like motion passes 72, correct, Jackie?
Correct.
Okay, very good, we are on to item, and we did dispose of Item 146, we're on to Item 147.
To authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest a future assessment for installation of pavement, curb, gutter, water, sewer, and street light, conduit, and sidewalk as a butt slot to a pod subdivision, and this is located at the northern terminus of Covenant Drive, move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Item 148, please.
It's a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Donald and Christine Potts for the variance, of the variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirements to install curb, gutter, street light conduit along Cantrum Boulevard and Covenant Drive, and to waive the requirements to install pave, pavement, curb, gutter, and water and sewer and sidewalk, and street light conduit, and dedicated right-of-way along the section line of right-of-way, and, and to waive the sidewalk along a portion of Covenant Drive as per Chapter 16 of Rapid City Municipal Code, this is located at the northern terminus of Covenant Drive, move to approve stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, motion on the floor is approval with stipulations, see no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Item 149, please.
It's a request by DDI International for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water and sewer, and to reduce the width and access easement from 59 feet to 26 feet, to waive the requirements to install sidewalk along the north side of East Mall Drive, to waive the requirement to install asphalt, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water, sewer, and additional right-of-way along Beale Street, and to waive the requirements to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water and sewer along Interstate 90 as per Chapter 16.16 of Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is being located north of Interstate 90 and south of East Mall Drive, motion be to deny in part and approve in part with the stipulations as per the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve in part and deny in part for the Planning Commission's recommendations, any discussion on that motion, any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Bill, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor, the bill list totals 8,170,342.83, I would like to add one item for mainline contracting, this is for the final change order having to do with the sanitary sewer system along Cantrum Boulevard in the amount of $38,890.77, making a new total of $8,209,233.60.